Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus? Present. Alderwoman Middlebrook?
Present.
Alderman Bosley? Alderwoman Evans? Alderman Page?
Present.
Alderwoman Ingracia? Alderman Colder? Alderwoman Rice?
Present.
Alderman Gunther?
Here.
Alderman Ballmer?
Present.
Alderwoman Martin? Alderman Stevens?
Here.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Present.
Alderwoman Howard?
Present.
Alderwoman Green?
Present.
Alderman Altenberg?
Present.
Alderwoman Peel?
Here.
Alderman Todd?
Present.
Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed?
Here.
Alderman Boyd?
Present.
Alderman Pecoro?
Present.
Alderman Orion?
Here.
Alderman Cone?
Present.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard?
Here.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Here.
Alderwoman Navarro? President Reed?
Here.
Alderman Bosley? Alderwoman Evans? Alderwoman Ingracia? Alderman Colder?
Here.
Alderwoman Martin? Alderwoman Davis? Alderwoman Spencer? Alderwoman Navarro? Twenty-two present.
Coram being present. Know if Reverend John Watson is with us this morning. Coram being present, we begin the day with prayer. So please join me in this morning's prayer. Given all honor to God, Almighty God, source of all authority, we humbly ask guidance in our deliberations and wisdom in our conclusions. Amen. Thank you all for coming to this Wednesday meeting. We're gonna start underlying item three, announcement of special order today. We're gonna take up our miscellaneous calendar. So under miscellaneous unfinished business, line item twenty-two, the coin toss for ward redistricting. So what this is, we're going to do a coin toss to assign the ward numbers. And the chairman of legislation will lead us in this discussion. Alderman, from tenth, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As you're probably all aware, we've received our go-ahead from the city council's office with our map. We are, before we proceed any further, we do have to assign the numbers. We've been dealing with letters to keep this. The whole goal here was to keep this political process as apolitical as possible. Trying to keep the map being the main drive of our team here. So consulting with experts in the field of mathematical calculations, it comes up that a coin toss is one of the better random ways to do what we're going to do here. We have fourteen wards that we have currently lettered A through N. So if you look in your drive, we have set out what's going to occur. We're going to flip a coin one time. The head side will be odd. If it comes up odd, then we will start backwards from the letter N with one, going to A with fourteen. If it comes up tails, it will then be even, starting with the letter N at the number two, three, four to fourteen, letter A becoming one. There is a caveat to this because going back to keeping this a non-political process, we are trying to make sure that any of the current aldermen, if they would just choose to run again in 2023, that they would not be running under the same ward number. That is why we flip this around. But there is a chance, if it comes up tails as an even coin toss, that Ward Nine would have an incumbent running under the same number. So if it does come up even, the caveat will be that Ward Nine will become Ward Eleven, and Ward Eleven become Ward Nine. If you feel like you're watching Jeopardy right now.
Sorry, Dan.
And to, you know, and what we're trying to do is, I guess that we're going to support the world of political signage because everyone has to go out and buy new signs, no matter what ward you're living in. There is no reusing numbers. But this, again, in 2023, whoever decides to run, everyone will be on an even-heel playing field. There will be no person who can say, I've been in this ward all these years, and this is my number, and to give this out. So we are trying again to make this as random as possible, to take all politics out of this. So that is the case. So again, and why is heads odd and tails even? Well, I flipped the coin and we figured it out that way.
No, heads is the front of the coin, which is number one, tails being the back of the coin.
Number two. All right, so what we will do, and Sharita has become the lucky person to do the coin toss. I'm going to, if you haven't noticed, I'm not in my, I'm in my office downtown. I'm going to go over there because I'm going to take the camera. We'll show you both sides of the coin. The coin will be tossed in the air, will hit the ground, and will not be touched by human hands till we show you what the coin toss is with the camera. And at that point, we'll be on our way. So if you allow me, please entertain the truth, Mr. President, while I take a stroll across the hallway.
All right. Alderman Shane Cone from the current twenty-fifth, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to be clear that I'm understanding this. So I think the caveat kind of has thrown me for a loop. I don't know if that, I don't know if the alderman from the tenth was joking or not, but so my, depending upon whether or not it's heads or tails, will just determine all of the ward numbers.
Yes, yes. And you look on the sheet, there's a page in the drive referring to miscellaneous unfinished business.
I know. Fortunately, my phone stolen and I need to set up my full drives again.
No problem. I'll ask someone if they can text it to you so that you can see it. Anyone?
But so the caveat, it's the caveat that if someone gets drawn into, based off of this coin toss into a ward that shares their existing number, that they're going to flip that? I don't think I.
No, what he's saying is that based on the way, based on the randomness of it right now, the only way that that could.
Mr. President, I can, I can, yeah, Shane, there's only one chance that this could happen. If it comes up tails and even, Ward Nine would be assigned to G where Alderman Gunther currently is, and that's the only chance it has of doing that. So at that point, it would still be an odd ward. We would merely make Ward Nine eleven. In other words, we would just be one, it's, you know, that way no one is assigned the same number they currently are holding. So it doesn't, there's only one chance of it happening. So that is our scenario.
Great. Thank you for the clarification.
Okay, all right. Yeah, so it's not a bunch of flip-flops, only one. This is a coin. It's a real coin. There's George Washington there. And there is the backside of it. I'm going to put it in Sharita's hands. You'll watch it. Never once does it leave my hands. I see we have a hand up.
Hold on for a second. Hold on a second. Alderwoman from first had her hand up earlier. Alderwoman from the first, I'm sorry, we missed you.
So I want to kind of just bring, I hate being the old head here, but I am. So up until they did ward redistricting in 2001, one of the things they were very careful about is keeping even, the same number of even numbers in North St. Louis and South St. Louis. And the reason why we have even and odd is because some people run with them. The mayor and the comptroller, and some people run with the president of the board of aldermen, right? If you put all the odd numbers in one side of town, that will prevent that. So I'm not gonna get in the middle of it, but I'm gonna say, if that occurs, we're gonna have to redo that a little bit, okay? So that it makes it fair for both sides of town, okay?
Okay, all right, I agree.
All right, that's all. And I'm, other than that, I'm okay.
Okay, and I believe that's one of the reasons we went to the coin toss, Alderwoman, because if we just pulled numbers out of a hat, there was a chance that north could be all even and south could be all. At this point, if you look at it, it takes one, two, three, four, it pretty much follows the numbers, and it looks like a very even divide for the most part everywhere.
Okay, I just didn't want it to be that. I just wanted to bring that up. I didn't know how you guys were doing that. I haven't been following it. But long as we're fair to all sides of town, I'm good.
All right.
When I talk to my experts in the mathematical field, they pointed it out to me, so we're taking that in. But if there's no other questions, we will.
Start over with that coin showing again. I haven't seen your hands in the last few minutes.
There's nothing on my sleeves. All right, here's the coin, heads and tails.
All right.
My hand is Sharita's hand right here. It's going to go up in the air, hit the ground, and we'll take the camera off and show when it hits.
Sharita, you're gonna be in trouble. No matter what, you get ready to make a whole lot of people mad one way or the other.
And can we get this as close as we possibly can? Can anyone see that?
No, we can't yet.
Let's get the computer a little closer.
Yeah, what you can do is Sharita, have it down there. Let Sharita lift it up and not.
Here, here we go.
Oh, down some, down, I mean, back toward, back toward you some. We're just seeing a corner of it.
Getting sick.
Seeing nothing right now.
Okay, well.
Oh, there it is. There was that. What do you guys?
We need a better focus.
Yep, we're real. There it is. Heads. Isn't that a head?
That is head, sir.
Everybody seeing heads?
Everybody take a snapshot for your record right now.
You can't see it. It's very blurry. We just know it's a shiny quarter.
Yeah, yeah, move to the right again. You got to take some.
Let's dim some lights. Maybe, maybe.
Turn off a couple of those lights.
Put a black X on heads or something.
Yeah.
Good suggestion, Tom.
Sharita, hit some lights. Turn some of those lights.
Do we have a piece of colored tape or something that we could put on it that would make it show up?
You can see it's a, that's a head.
That's heads right there.
That's heads. You guys see that?
Nope.
See? Can we put a mark on it, a black marker?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, just put.
Use a Sharpie and just put a dot on it.
Right.
Yeah.
And we won't tell the federal people that you are messing with coins. We won't turn you in.
Yeah, yeah. Alderman Stevens?
Yes, Mr. President, would it perhaps be more prudent to utilize the screen sharing option and use like a webpage that's just a coin flip?
You know. No, we thought about that, and people can say that those were manipulated and all sorts of things like that. So we're just gonna do a coin toss.
This, this, here we go, gentlemen. This will now be heads. All right? And that would be tails.
Okay.
All right. The mark on my finger doesn't mean a thing.
All right, Sharita.
There she goes.
Point of order.
Hold on. Who's raising a point of order?
Brett.
Twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth.
Alderman from twenty-fourth, please take the point of order.
Did we not just flip the coin and it came up heads?
Oh, it came up heads, but the people who saw it heads like I did, didn't speak up, so we're now flipping again.
So now we're just, well, I mean, I called a point of order. Now we're just gonna re-flip it? That doesn't seem.
Yeah, I asked a question about it too, Mr. President.
Well, did you, when it was heads, and I said it was heads, did you speak up and say, no?
I did. Actually, when they started talking about the marker, I was like, so we're just going to flip it again? Question mark.
But, but.
Like, that doesn't seem, you know, one should be talking about a process for voting on this as well.
Alderman, you had an opportunity to weigh in, and like I did, I saw that it was heads. Nobody else spoke up but me. Everybody else said that, all the other voices I heard were saying, I couldn't see it. So if someone else, we needed other people to say, yes, I see it, I see it, I see it, but, and then when someone said, mark it, that's where we were.
I mean, Mr. President, we have a, we have a way of doing that. We vote on things. So we could have taken a vote to like ensure that people saw it or didn't see it.
So here's the thing, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
How do you want to proceed? Because now it appears some aldermen are speaking up, saying that they saw it was heads, just like I saw it was.
Again, I can see it says, I'm in the room. Apparently, we didn't understand the lighting or the technical aspect of this. It came up heads. I can show you that, you know, it was heads. We have witnesses, it was heads. If you look at the recording of the meeting, it'll come up heads because you can definitely see it was heads.
Yeah. Yeah, that first shot was heads. I think we, we.
I mean, technically, I believe STL could run back and you can run the meeting and see that the coin that we showed on the floor was definitely a head shape. In order to appease people, we drew something on the coin. But maybe we shouldn't, you know, again, this is something that's never been done before. But it definitely was a heads. It matters to me not which way it ends, but if there is a need to vote to re-toss, that would be your call. I would say that, you know, it's, it's a, whatever chance is chance, but we, we're dealing with the first coin toss. There is no second coin toss at this point because we're still, you know, I would do whatever you say at this point, as this is your board.
Let's ask, I think we defer to the clerk, the neutral party that was in the room that made the flip. Madam Clerk?
Hold on.
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk, did you flip the coin?
I did flip the coin.
The coin that you flipped, did it land on the ground?
It did.
When it landed, what side of the coin was showing?
It was on heads.
Okay, so there, there it is. There it is. And we also have the video. People can go back and review the video. It was heads. And so with it being heads, either you or the chairman, if you will, pull out the sheet and read through what those ward numbers would be based on that coin flip.
I can go back and do it from over there.
Okay. Chairman Ballmer is gonna do it.
Okay, and after, hey, before you do it, we have a couple of hands up. Alderwoman from first.
Mr. President, Alderwoman from the seventeenth had her hand up first before me.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderwoman from the seventeenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I have two questions. One, I think, has already been answered. The second question I've had is, how are we gonna be deciding who's gonna be, which wards are gonna be running for two or four years?
That's already part of the charter change. So in the charter change, the odd-number wards, they will run for two years. Even-number wards will run for four years.
Thank you.
All right. Alderwoman, Alderwoman from first, did you still have anything or are we good?
I did, but so, but you kind of decided it because what I think is that that's an awful big responsibility to put on the clerk about what happened and what turned up. I thought that the other thing was that we all wanted to see that. That's why we wanted a visual enactment and putting the black Sharpie on it. We don't know what that meant at this point, so throwing it again didn't change anything. So that was just my opposite argument to saying, oh, you made that decision. I agree with you. At the time, you did say it was heads. I saw myself, I saw the Alderwoman from the eighth, I saw lots of people who did not know what it said. And so you gave an answer of how to be more fair to me. Take it off the clerk, and so that we throw another one, we had a test toss. Sometimes in football, that happens, okay? So I disagree with the thing of, oh, it was heads, and we're just gonna go along with it. I think that was not a good way to do it. And I think that now by us having a black visual mark on there, we will all see it. And so nobody can then say something happened. So that was just my position on it. I thought you were correct in your assessment, that you had called it out very early, and nobody said anything in your support.
All right, thank, thank you. Alderwoman, Alderman from the twenty-first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree. I did see that it was heads when the coin hit the ground. But I think in the interest of transparency, I think that we should do it again for all of our residents that are listening or watching live, and just for transparency for members of the board.
Okay, thank you, Alderman. Alderwoman from the nineteenth, you had your hand up for a long time, and then I think it was the twenty-fourth, the twenty-third, and the eighth. So Alderwoman from the nineteenth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I simply want to agree with the analysis of the Alderwoman from the first ward. We should consider that a test. We should start with designated with, with, we now have an opportunity to know for sure now that you have marked it. And that way, there's no confusion. There's no reason for anybody to come back later and complain. And we need to make sure that as we move forward, all of our conversation should be extremely clear while we're in this process. Because this is, this is very important, and we can't keep going back and forth, back and forth. So let's, you have a process in place. We now have tested it, and we know the right way to do it. So now we shall start the toss. Thank you.
All right. Then it was the Alderman from the twenty-third.
I would, and this can get shot down right away, but I would like to make a motion. We just do, since we've already done this twice, let's just do a three toss, best two out of three. And, you know, however it comes up, it comes up. I mean, we've already tossed it. And I saw the second toss, the black part came up, which I think was probably the other side, but that might have been heads again. But I'd like to make a motion, and if nobody seconds it, that's fine, but we do, we do it, start over and do the best two out of three. And then we know.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third that we. You guys gotta give me a second to. It's been moved by Alderman from the twenty-third that we do best two out of three, and it takes a second.
Point of clarification, Mr. President.
Yeah, we're gonna start over and do best two out of three.
Thank you.
Entertain a second on that.
Alderman twenty-fifth.
A second about Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Any further discussion on that, on that, on that motion? Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you've had your hand up for a while. And then Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think this is a bit absurd. We're calling into controversy the outcome of a coin toss here, which is just kind of insane to me. It came up heads. It was called heads in the room. You called it heads. The clerk called it heads. The chairman called it heads. Alderman Cone saw heads. I saw heads. We would have been out of order if we just started calling, if we just started shouting out that we agree with you. And the miscellaneous item on the drive specifically says, one flip of the coin. So this, it seems out of line to me to have a flip of the coin where it is called heads in the room. And now, all of a sudden, we are going to re-flip it. I mean, do people really have that little faith in the people in the room? That, this is absurd. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Alderman from the twenty-fourth. Alderwoman from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I did see heads. I was shaking my head because I don't generally open up my mic unless I'm recognized for something. So I, I didn't know, there wasn't a call for, can you see it or not? So I didn't speak up, but I did see heads, and I do think that the video shows it pretty clearly. The head was kind of upside down in the camera. I mean, but it is clearly, it was a smooth head. I, I don't know that I care one way or the other about whether we redo this into, you know, best two out of three or not. But I agree with the Alderman from the twenty-fourth that it does say one flip of the coin, and we have witnesses in the room. I don't see a need to redo the process, but I would also like to add that I respect the Alderwoman from the nineteenth and your choice of polka dots this morning. Thank you, Mr. President.
Right, thank you. Thank you. Alderman from the ninth, I think it'd be your first.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to agree absolutely with the Alderman from the twenty-fourth. We had not only the chairman in the room, but also our clerk, who has no weight on this whatsoever, confirm it. So if we're not gonna trust our clerk, and as it says, one flip of the coin, that was a flip. We made a deal out of this, and now I don't care one way or the other, honestly, but I just think if we're gonna say one flip of the coin, and the clerk confirmed it, I think we should go with that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the seventh, I think you were next, and then Alderwoman from the thirteenth is after you.
Yeah, I'll be very brief and just echo Alderman from the twenty-fourth, eighth, and ninth. I mean, I also saw heads and shook my head in the affirmative in response to you, Chairman, or Mr. President. But yeah, I don't get in the, I don't usually just blurt out on the Zoom meetings.
Got it, got it.
I think we're just adding more controversy to this process. If we start re-flipping and doing two of three coin tosses, I think we, we stick with our initial toss. I haven't even done the math to realize if that would mean the ward I live in is an odd or even. I'm so confused, but I was clearly ahead. So let's assign the numbers and move on.
All right, all right, thank you. And one, one of the things that I want to make sure to put out here as we're going through this, well, I'll wait. Alderwoman from the thirteenth, this year.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. I also saw heads and agree with the Alderman from the twenty-fourth and from the ninth and the seventh, and with the Alderwoman from the eighth. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Alderwoman from the nineteenth and the first, both of you, and hold on. Alderwoman from the fourteenth, speaking for the first time, so let's, Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
All I want to say, let's move on. I mean, let's just flip the coins and move on. And nobody's probably gonna have their same ward number. We're making a whole lot about nothing. Flip the coin. How simple can we be?
All right. Sounds good. And then Alderwoman from, Alderwoman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, what was the whole purpose of showing us the coin?
Just to show people that it wasn't a two-headed coin or coin that had two tails on it or anything of that nature.
And then the purpose was, what was the purpose of us showing us the flip?
Showing, being able to show that the coin that landed, it actually landed on heads or tails.
Now, I don't dispute the clerk. I still say that that's an off, I don't like putting responsibility on on our clerks and other people like that. And I didn't. I was trying to see it. I didn't. Um, and also sitting here, now if nobody else in this whole wo- uh Board of Aldermen has reason to question anything I do, you all know that, okay? I have a reason to question every single thing. Um, but I just wanted everybody to feel comfortable and that they, that they were being treated fairly. We don't know what that flip of the coin even meant. And I wanna know who decided it was gonna be one flip of the coin? Because now we have a motion on the table, the best two or three. We didn't know, when I came in here today, I didn't know what the process was going to be. I I think many of us did not know. What is one flip of the coin versus five flip of the coins versus fifteen? I don't know, you know, it's, but my whole thing was why I was suggesting putting a black mark on it. This was, I couldn't see it and I wanted to be, not for it to be the clerk's decision, which uh everybody's like, oh, well, that's okay. Order the uh, the uh president, I mean, the vice president's uh decision or the chairman of legislation. But had there not been a ra- uh racist redistricting, guess who would have been the chair of legislation if she had wanted to be? Me, okay? Let's go to that, okay? So that's why I just wanted to be, there's not gonna be any great change because we don't even know what the flip mean. But that way, everybody will uh see a fairness that I participated, this is my third redistricting, should have been my fourth. I've seen, tell you all kind of unfairness that people say it wouldn't happen that has happened in this. So that's my only thing is not to put it on the clerk and not for there to be coming along later, what happened uh undermining. And so we don't know what that toss meant. There's nothing that says we can't have a uh, a uh practice uh toss or anything like that. So everybody's putting all this pressure like, oh, that was one toss and that's it. Why? Who made that, did you and the uh, uh, the chair of the committee uh make the decision that it would be one toss? Mr. President?
Oh, no, it was just uh when the, when the chairman was uh, you know, looking for the best way to do it, make it as random as possible uh and as fair as possible, uh that ended up being the best uh solution for what's a- as random as possible and fair as possible. Which is why we started out with with letters opposed to numbers. Because if we would have started out with numbers, everyone would have said that that was predetermined. So taking that predi- predisposition out of it, um, you're left with, you know, these, you know, this being the most random uh fair aspect of it uh in terms of uh doing the, you know, doing this uh coin, coin toss.
A lot, my last question, do we have a motion and a second on the floor?
Yes, there's a uh, there's a motion by the Alderman from the twenty third, second by the Alderman from the twenty fifth uh to do the best two out of three.
And then, and and I have one more. He said that we already had done, I saw the co- coin toes, twice toss where we said we, I couldn't see if it was head, but other people's did. Did we do another coin toss after that? I don't remember seeing another.
We were uh.
About to do it, I thought.
They were in the midst of that coin toss, um, but you know, by the time that coin toss was taking place or was taking place, that there were, you know, a bunch of people speaking out on both sides at that point. So that was, it wasn't uh.
So we've done one co- coin toss?
Madam Clerk, what would you, I'm sorry, I I'm sorry, I saw.
I understand, uh, this is right.
Clerk waved, moved, raised their hand. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
No, I didn't, I mean, but it was a second coin toss, so.
Yeah.
And was that one also a head?
That was tails.
So it's a heads and a tails. I don't care, uh, okay, I I'm gonna vote with Alderman's uh motion for the twenty third to do best two out of three, because I'm done with this.
Uh, Alderman, Alderman from the, Alderman from the tenth.
Uh, yeah, go ahead. This is, this is not all upon uh, uh, Madam Clerk, this is also upon myself. I was in the room, I saw it, I believe it did come up heads. Uh, matters to me what not, uh, when you're tossing a coin, uh, time proven typically to start anything. They only toss a coin once, they don't start a football game by tossing two out of three. They don't start any thing, uh, when you do something, it's it's you, it's this way or that way. Uh, if, you know, my eighteen plus years on here, I believe my, my word is good enough. And I believe enough other people saw the heads and I believe we could prove it heads with a replay by STL showing that the the outline of the heads is there. Uh, in, i- it's, as far as what it means, it just means that you're gonna have a different number. Uh, as far as it to the four-year term, you know, that's for whoever wins the election. Uh, there's no guarantee that any of us or who's running or how we're going to be. What we're tossing here is not for any of us. What we're tossing here is for the future of St. Louis, what we tossed far. What we're trying to do here is move forward. It, this process is not about any of us in, in in the board currently. In twenty twenty-three, the spring election cycle will be a new election cycle. Many of us will be gone, most of us could be gone, there may be new people running. So what we are doing here is trying to move forward and present something that creates a better city for the long, long term. The wards will be evenly dispersed up between north and south, being every other. As far as the two four-year terms, those are for whoever happens to win the election. None of us are guaranteed an election win. If we're worried about that, then we're worried about the wrong thing. What we should be worried about is that we have come up with a map that is deemed equitable, that is deemed fair, that is deemed that it will stand to any muster. We have a map that'll work for the future of St. Louis. We have a map that we can be proud of. We are just now assigning numbers, trying to make this political process as least little politically as we can. It was a coin toss, it was heads. Unfortunately, we didn't take into uh of the, the lighting and the technical aspects of this. But I believe that STL TV could prove at any time that was a heads coin toss. Uh, if uh we need to continue, uh, I, we can take a vote, I I would be a vote in the negative. Uh, what has happened has happened. Uh, if, you know, we wanna continue with a vote or someone will write, rescind their second, rescind their motion, we can move forward. Otherwise, uh, that's my, my case, thank you.
All right, all right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty second.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board.
Good morning.
I hate to say this, I find this all comical. Um, but process is everything. And I think that the chairman of legislation has done a phenomenal job attempting to be as fair and practical as possible. But there is ma- and and I think uh uh what sounds like a good idea unfortunately has some unintended consequences. Um, and the unintended consequence is this, um, members of the board did not agree on how we should select um, these numbers. Um, i- i- it came from the, the chairman and it was put in the Google Drive with some instructions and it'll be a coin flip. However, I think there's merit in what some people have said. Who came up with that idea? Why wasn't the members consulted? Why didn't we have unanimous consent on the process? It it could have easily come out three uh, you know, two out of three. That could have been something that someone would have recommended and most people unanimously think that's a great idea. Personally, I don't care, one way or the other. Um, I just want it to be fair and I want everybody to feel like it was a fair process. Uh, now certainly some people didn't see, some people did see. And the chairman is right, you can go back and play it on STL TV and, and and get a microscope and and see emphatically that it it was, what was it? I forgot what it was, heads, heads. It was heads, um. But, golly, man, this is the Board of Aldermen. And we're almost to the finish line. And we are at this place right now about whether we saw heads or not. Um, but I I'm for a fair process, two out of three sounds great to me. Um. God bless us, I'm I'm done.
All right, thank you. Alderman from the twenty fourth.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Uh, I I think if anyone had an issue with the process, the time to bring that up was before the coin toss that we did, that everyone in the room uh agreed on the call. Uh, the i- i- to, to, if if we don't like the outcome of two or three, do we argue for three out of five then? I mean, where does this stop? This is insanity. The fact that we are forty minutes into arguing about a coin toss is absurd. If we have so little faith in our clerk and so little faith in the chairman of the committee and so little faith in the president of this board that we cannot take their word on a coin toss, I have serious concerns for the future of this city. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Uh, Alderman from the first.
Mr. President, members of the board, not to belabor the point, because you and I have worked our differences out, but this president voted to take my vote away from me and the community. He, he now knows his mistake and we have worked it out. And so I'm, I'm bringing that up to say, it's a lot of things that this Board of Aldermen have done that are not right. But my problem is, I just wanted to see the, be able to see the toss. The lighting did not allow that. We did not know when that toss was done, if that was going to be a a a factor or not. We only knew that after when we could, some of us could not see. If you saw it and you say that's good enough for you, that's fine. If you really think that uh the Alderman from the twenty fourth is so uh ridiculous, then you wouldn't have kept uh arguing about it. So you can't think it's that ridiculous because you've been participating in this argument the majority of the time. So it is not ridiculous, it's not ridiculous to me. And I challenge each, every one of you all, that if you had had your vote taken away in two thousand and one, would be, would you be so cavalier in saying, oh, I trust this process? Because I can tell you as a black woman who had her vote taken away from her and two-thirds of her community illegally, that I'm not cavalier about any of this process. And um, I'm gonna be all right anyway. I just ran a two out, two uh year race and I can run another one. But I just wanted everybody to be able to see that was a visual one. I thought the Alderman from the twenty third came up with a very good compromise about doing two out of three. We've had one of each and this will be the coin toss. But the the insistence that it just be one way for me, um, makes me very, very nervous. I haven't participated a lot in this redistricting because when your vote has been taken away from you by this very Board of Aldermen, and I told people this, it's like attending my murder again to be even sitting here. It's like attending with my grandmother when she was trying to register to vote in the nineteen sixties and they wouldn't let her and they had all these laws. But I sit here, the person whose vote was taken away representing a community. So when I say I want every process to feel comfortable with it, if all of you all feel comfortable, I want all of you all to have your vote taken away and then come back and talk to me. Because if you haven't, you don't understand what I'm talking about. And this simple process of throw, doing a coin, if it's so absurd to you, but have some um understanding why we have voting right laws, why we have Fourteenth and Fifteenth Amendment, why we had to change our constitution to let black people vote, why we had to change our constitution to let women vote. It's a process and the more people that feel comfortable that the process is fair, which all of you all know, that's one of my things about fairness is rules. And even when it doesn't go along with me, um, I will say, well, I don't think this, but I just really couldn't see it. And I was trying to see it and if we maybe had stopped and thought, then maybe we would have marked it before. Um, and I don't know that in committee, we, they took a vote about this is how it was gonna done. And so when then you come out and say, well, just trust this, no, that's why we have votes. And that's why we discuss about why we believe something or not and how comfortable we are with it. And my experience with this Board of Aldermen is not to trust, uh, trust everybody and brand all your cows. When my own eyes cannot see it, it is not ridiculous or absurd. It is a black woman who has had her ward taken away, a successful black ward, had her voters' votes suppressed, had all kind of things. And no, this is not a good ward map for North St. Louis if we really have to get into it. It's one that they say will stand up to challenge, except if you bring the challenges a different way. I know how to bring the challenges a different way, that it will not stand up to challenge, okay? And so I have come here prepared to vote for this map in spite of everything, but it's not a good map for North St. Louis. For all of you all who pushed fourteen wards, it is a painful, ugly map. And I, I, I in, I choir from, I ask you to drive these big, huge wards that we have and to ask the question, what happened? It is not a good, fair map for North St. Louis. But I came prepared today to vote for it anyway because I, and I told the president this and who he worked with is that they had done the best job they could with uh what has happened in the last twenty years to North St. Louis purposely, not accidentally, but purposely under twenty years of a white mayor. So if we wanna get into all the racism that has happened and things like that, we can. So if you can't let go of a simple uh toss of a coin, then to me, that's something else, okay? But for me, I can't let go of it because I didn't see it with my own eyes. And um, I've been here longer than eighteen years of the current chair. I've been here longer than everybody that's sitting here and I don't try to cheat people. And I don't see how if you do two out of three, it's gonna hurt anything at all. And it's a process and Alderman from the twenty second ward made some very good points about transparency. So um, if the people say it's observed, stop arguing and let's just have two out of three and we'll be okay. Because it doesn't, we don't even know what the other ones meant anyway.
All right, uh, and.
We have a motion on the table and I call the question.
Hold on a second, hold on. Uh, uh, so the um, uh, let me jump here, in here for a second. So a couple of things, I wanna make sure that people uh understand this, not so much for the members of the board, but for people who are watching this right now. Um, uh, first, if you look at currently under heads, and I think this is an important note, currently under heads, uh, the head flip uh disfavors the chairman from the tenth. Because what the head flip does is make the chairman from the tenth an odd ward. So what that means is that he's gonna have to do a two-year election. So that's the worst possible, in terms of flips, it did not favor him. Uh, it, so I think it's admirable that he's still supporting it even though it didn't favor him. And then here's the other thing that's really important note, I wanna make sure people understand this and see it. The Alderman from the first who just spoke, Alderman from the first, she ended up with an even number. So she won, she essentially won that flip. Uh, so it favors her, but even though it favors her, she's saying she wants to make sure that the process is fair for everyone else here. Uh, and it may come out that the Alderman from the first ends up not having an odd number, a a even number and having an odd number, not favoring her. But she's willing to take that risk because she wants to make sure that everybody has a of a fair shot. And then you have on the other side, uh, the chairman who, who did not win the toss, right? But was willing to live with, live with the results. So I think that that's, I think that that, you know, that speaks some volumes to this board. And I want people who are watching this to understand that as the backdrop and not look at it and say, oh, there, there, there are, you know, they're, they're debating heavily over this coin uh flip. But what you have here in a lot of the cases, people, some people who won, who say, you know, even though I won, I'm okay with doing it again, matter of fact, I'd like to do it again. And people who lost saying, even though I lost, let's just live with it and and move on. Um, so I want people to understand that, that, you know, it's not people, uh, people are largely from what I've seen, not just, you know, speaking out of just, oh, this is, uh, be a better situation for me if we, if we redo it. If we end up, uh, if we end up doing, uh, voting uh for uh best two out of three, uh, a couple of things we need to consider. Uh. If we vote for two out of three and if that's a vote for, by this board, uh, whatever way it comes out, uh, that's the way we would go. Um, I would vote, um, uh, I would abstain from that. And the reason I would have to abstain from that is because uh, for me, I would be the, I, you know, could be to decide and vote between the, between the two sides. And the ward numbers would not affect me, right? Uh, and to take all of that randomness out of it, I think we need to, as much as possible, push this and assure that this is in the hands of, of the Board of Aldermen. We've done that thus far on everything that we've done. of, of the Board of Aldermen. We've done that thus far on everything that we've done. I think it was good that we lettered the things at the beginning and all that stuff. But what I would like to do, because we have a long agenda, uh, is to, if we're gonna get to a vote, let's get to a vote and then whichever way that comes out is done. And then we move on to the next piece. If anyone has anything new to add, add it now. But if, if you don't have anything new to add, let's just get to the vote one way or the other, so that we can, uh, uh, move on. The, the part, you know, with it going to a vote, one thing that, that's in my mind, assured, it takes another thing off the table in terms of any opponents who want to, uh, raise questions about the process or anything in the future, which is why we've been very careful about being, uh, as transparent, open and, you know, providing as much clarity as possible. And it's tough to do in this situation. But Alderman from the 23rd, anything absolute, if it's not.
It, it, it's, it's new. It's just a question about, because the question was called when you did vote this, but the first one, sort of some people say was heads, the second one I saw had the black ring was tails. So is it gonna, I just, for, so everybody, so I know. Are we starting over or is this next toss, since it was one heads, one tails? Does this next toss be the deciding toss? Or are we starting over with two out of three? It's just a question.
Madam, Madam Clerk, you, you made the second flip and that was tails?
Yes, it was tails, but I don't think we showed it on camera, but it was definitely tails.
Okay, so, uh, so we would do, um, two more flips. We have a heads on the table. If we, the next toss is a heads, there, there it is. The next toss is the tails, then we have two tails. Then we have an opportunity to do, uh, do another, another toss.
I, I just wanted to be clear. Thank you.
Okay. All right. I'm gonna, I hesitate. Alderman from the third.
I'm sorry, just for clarification, are, are you saying that the two tosses that we did, since they are heads and tails, we're gonna do two new tosses right now? I just want to make sure.
The clerk said that the second toss was not shown on camera, so it wasn't truly validated as a toss.
Well, well, if that's the case, if it wasn't validated as a toss, would it, once again, are we doing two new flips? Are we finna do the two, you know, best two out of three right now, starting from fresh? That's what I would just said, I just.
Yeah, yeah, we, so we would, so we would, so we would do, uh, two additional flips. We know that the first one was a heads.
So are you saying if this next one is a heads, then the heads have it?
Yeah. And, and one other thing, the other, other thing we can do is just do the best two out of three right now. Leave that other.
Well, yeah, I, I would think that'd make the most sense with it being, and we've already expressed that one was heads and one was tails. I thought we want an equal playing field. And I also would like to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. President, my apologies.
We just start over, do the best two out of three and we're, we're done, done with it.
Okay. That's perfect. And I guess my other question is, because none of us, and I just want to make that clear also for those people who are watching, none of us that I know of in the, in the board currently knew specifically what it is that we were flipping for. So you didn't know whether you were going to be on an even side or odd side. So, you know, many of us aren't arguing from a personal perspective on what it is that we like our wards to be. We just want a transparent process. Alderman Orion is virtually saying, we did this already. Why are we going back to the drawing board on it? It happened. Let's see what the results are. Alderman Tyus and other individuals are saying, hey, things didn't seem upstanding out the way that I'd like them to. It wasn't completely transparent to me, which is, you know, is not about the person who was flipping, all the individuals who are there in the room. It's about that entire process feeling comfortable at this particular point. And I was feeling like that we can move forward comfortably and each one of us has that, that comfortability factor. This is the only time we're ever gonna do this. It's 28 of us this time next year. It'd be individuals running, maybe 14 less than us. So, you know, let's, individuals do want to get it right. So I'm not gonna talk too much, but I just wanted to clarify. And I do want to ask this, is there any way we can know before we do these other two, uh, flips, uh, what we flipping about? Because it's interesting not knowing until afterwards, because I would believe and this is not no disrespect to you, Mr. President, or anybody else.
Alderman, Alderman, before you, before you, before you jump, you, you, uh, you, uh, you, you joined the minute meeting a little late. It, so it's on the Google Drive, uh, under miscellaneous, uh, business. And it's the coin flip to decide ward numbers.
So we, we put that out this morning? Why, why, I know we, we flipping to decide numbers. I'm saying we didn't know exactly what those numbers are, who's tagging with who. What ward, even right now. That's what I'm saying. No, I know for sure we're flipping about the.
Got it, got it, got it. Yeah, yeah.
We weren't being selfish and saying that was tails and I wanted heads. That's, that's the point I was just trying to.
Yep, yep. And thank you for underscoring that. And, and that's what I wanted people to know. Like I said, it is not absolutely zero, not in the best interest of the Alderman from the first, Alderman Sharon Tyus to have another flip right now. Not at all. She's clearly won that flip. Her ward right now is in the best position possible. But even given that, she's like, well, I still would like to, uh, uh, you know, have an opportunity for everyone to have a fair shot. So, so, uh, with that being the backdrop, and like I said, and the Alderman from the 10th clearly lost that first flip. But even though he lost that first flip, it would be in his best interest to vote for best two out of three. And he's already said he wouldn't. He would support that first flip. So I think that let's, um, uh, we have a long agenda. So I'm just asking people, if you don't have anything absolutely, uh, you know, essential to say now, let's, let's move on with, with this vote is the best two out of three. And then we have plenty of time to dive into further discussion, uh, a little bit later in this agenda. We have the Alderman from the 10th, Alderman from the 25th and Alderman from the 24th all have their hands up.
Uh, Jerry, Jerry, this, this very quickly, if we're going, if the vote to redo a two out of three does occur, that I would suggest doing two out of three, because at this point, if you say the first one was heads, then going two out of three is kind of a moot point.
Throw it out.
You're agreeing that the first one was heads, then we're done. To me, uh, to, to me, it's that simple. Again, it, 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 I will be voting in the negative. Uh, I believe, you know, if, I trust what I saw. I believe again, we can show it again, but not to beat a dead horse. Anything you guys vote for, that's what we'll do. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Alderman from the 25th.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would just like to, uh, reiterate my colleague from the 10th, you know, that the, the vote would be to, uh, move forward with a, a, a process for two out of three and that we should flip it the three times and not account for the first, uh, toss. The, the second part, which I, I feel like hasn't really been brought up, is that we really probably should have voted as a full body on the process before doing the flip. And so this does essentially establish a, a process that the entire body has voted on. And, you know, this would, you know, essentially establish that process moving forward.
Yep, exactly. Alderman from the 24th.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I, I just want to be clear so that we don't have controversy moving forward on this.
Thank you.
I, I would never thought in my life I was gonna argue this long about coin toss. So if, if, uh, Alderman from the 23rd's motion passes, then the, the scoreboard will be zero, zero, is what we're saying.
Well, let's start out zero, zero. So we, so for people who, who still didn't see that first coin flip, didn't see that, couldn't make out the figure, and we don't have time for STL TV to go get a visual copy of it and distribute it. Let's just start out zero, zero. And, uh, when you vote best two out of three, you will be voting to start out for doing either three coin flips or the first two are tails or the first two are heads. We're done after the first two. But if it takes three, we're gonna do up to three tosses. And everybody lives with it and we move forward. Everybody good with that? Alderman from, Alderman from the 20th, you are.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to make a suggestion that we do a coin toss to figure out if we do more coin tosses.
Oh, no.
I mean, that would seem to be a fair way to do it, uh, and, uh, we could just get on with life.
All right. Thanks, Alderman. A, a, an option, an option of a motion and a second on the table, that would have been a great idea. Anyway, so it's been moved by Alderman from the 23rd, second about Alderman from the 25th, uh, that we do the best two out of three. Madam Clerk, uh, please call the rope.
Alderman Tyus.
Yes, it's me.
Alderman Middlebrook.
No.
Alderman Bosley.
Aye.
Alderman Evans.
Aye.
Alderman Page.
No.
Alderman Ingracia.
No.
Alderman Calder.
No.
Alderman Rice.
No.
Alderman Gunther.
No.
Alderman Ballmer.
No.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Stevens.
No.
Alderman Switzer.
No.
Alderman Howard.
No.
Alderman Green.
No.
Alderman Oldenburg.
No.
Alderman Peal.
No.
Alderman Todd.
Present.
Alderman Davis.
No.
Alderman Spencer.
Nope.
Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Vaquero.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Nope.
Alderman Kohn. Alderman Clark Hubbard.
No.
Alderman Boyd.
No.
Alderman Navarro.
No.
President Reed.
Present.
Alderman Tyus.
Aye. Could you change my vote to a no? This is Alderman Evans.
Alderman Martin. Alderman Kohn.
No.
Four aye votes, 21 no votes and three voted present.
Uh, by a vote, you fail to stand the motion of Alderman from the, um, from the 23rd. Uh, so, uh, on the amendment to the bill, uh, you know, based on the coin toss, uh, the way the numbering will be set up, and this is for the viewers who, who do not have access to the, the documents in the Google Drive. So A, Ward A, as it appears on the map today, will be Ward 14. Ward B would be, uh, 13, C, 12, D, 11, E, 10, F, 9, G, 8, H, 7, I, 6, J, 5, K, 4, L, 3, M, 2, and N is 1. Right. Now we will, it seems like we've been here all day, but we haven't even gotten to introduction of our guest yet, everybody. So we'll return to our regular order of business. Introduction of our guest, introduction of our guest, Alderman from the, oh, Alderman from the first.
I just wondered if you could put that, uh, read out of what you just done on, on the Google Drive, so we'll be able to see it, please.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, uh, Mr. Clerk, uh, and Mary, can you guys handle that? So they'll, they'll get it out there for you. All right. Thank you. Uh, Alderman from the 23rd.
As always, I'd like to have my good friend Greg Meyer, who also suggested that in baseball, they do best four out of seven. So I'd have Greg as my special guest.
All right. Welcome, Greg. Alderman from the 21st.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, well, this is history right here. So every member of the Board of Aldermen today is my special guest.
Oh, there we go.
And we just need to put her on the payroll, Rachel Litman from STL Public Radio.
Rachel, that's, you know what? I don't think Rachel's ever been anybody's special guest. So Rachel Litman. Any further introductions, any further introductions? Alderman from 10th, like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we're gathered here today, on this day in 1963, how appropriate, the first use of instant replay was done on TV during the Army Navy football game. 1978, the movie The Deer Hunter premiered. But today is the national day for something that was first sold in 1857 that changed people's lives. That's why today is National Toilet Paper Day. It, so. Before 1857 on this day, you had to go get the Sears catalog, I guess. Thank you, sir.
All right. Sears was around back then, but they probably weren't. Approval of the minutes.
Approval of the minutes dated Friday, December 3rd, 2021.
Alderman from the 10th, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for approval of the minutes from December 3rd, 2021.
Move by Alderman from 10th, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the 5th, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Motion carries. Report on the city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda has been placed in the Alderman mailboxes. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for the appointment to the regional convention and sports complex authority. The appointment of Ms. Sharita Hagler, who resides in the 18th ward. I respectfully request your approval of the appointment sincerely to Sheriff O. Jones-Mayer.
Alderman from the 18th, you recognize on mayor's appointment to the regional convention and sports complex authority.
I thank you, Mr. President. Uh, uh, I approve of the mayor's appointment to the port authority.
Uh, you'd like to make a motion for approval.
I would like to make a motion to approve the mayor's appointment to the port, port authority.
Second.
Uh, to the, uh, regional convention, been, uh, mo- motion by Alderman from the 18th, second about Alderman from the 25th, any discussion? Alderman from the first.
Oh, I'm sorry. I have a question, a point. I, I'll wait till this is finished and then I have a point of order. I'll wait.
Okay. It's been moved and, and seconded by Alderman from the 25th. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose. Motion carries. We will dispense with line item seven. Alderman from the first.
I just have a point of inquiry, a point of order. So we're not doing, uh, a special meeting. We're actually gonna do the full board agenda today.
Uh, yeah, I had, I.
Because I thought that's what we were called in for, a special meeting.
Yeah, uh, the clerk, uh, the clerk notified me, uh, this one, there's a couple bills that, uh, there, there's a timing on them. If we don't. uh, there, there's a timing on them, so if we don't get them done by Friday, we'll have to come back next week, so.
I withdraw any objections.
Yeah, but, but no, you, you, you're correct in your, in your, in your assessment, all right, thank you. Uh, would anyone like, like take any bills off of any of our informal calendars, Alderman from the tenth?
I'm sorry, sir, I stepped away for a second, what did I do?
Board Bill one oh one has amended, would you like that to be placed on the regular perfection calendar?
I think that might be a good idea, yes, I would move that report, or one oh one has amended to the regular perfection calendar, thank you, sir.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that, place Board Bill one oh one as amended on the regular perfection calendar. Anyone like to take any further bills off of any of our informal calendars? Anyone like to take, all right, we will dispense with line items eight through ten, first reading of board list.
Board Bill one forty-eight sponsored by Alderman Davis and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on December first, twenty twenty-one, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the J Industrial District and the K unrestricted, unrestricted district to K Industrial District, only two parcels in City Block two two one four, three parcels in City Block two two three one, two parcels in City Block two two three three point one eight, and six parcels in two two four three one, two two four three point one eight, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block two two one four, two two three one, two two three three one eight, and two two three four one eight, and contain an emergency clause. That is the extent of reference to committee, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, two two four three one eight. And two two, two two three three one eight, first reading, reference the committee.
Board Bill one forty-eight. To the HUDs Committee, Board Bill one forty-eight.
Second reading.
The following board bill was reported out of HUDs with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill one thirty-three sponsored by Alderman Orion and ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on November third, twenty twenty-one, to change the zoning of property as indicated on district map from the J Industrial District to A Single Family Dwelling District and City Block five zero nine five, so as to include the described parcels of land in City Block five zero nine five and contain an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of Ways and Means with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill one eighteen, committee sub sponsored by Alderman Todd and Alderman Mohammed, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Enforcement, wherein the Board of Alderman authorizes the receipt of an appropriate funds awarded to the U.S. Department of Labor relating to the youth build grant and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one forty-five sponsored by Alderman Davis, Alderman Howard, and Ald- Alderman Gunther, and ordinance providing for and directing the submission to the qualified electors of, of the City of St. Louis at a special bonding election to be held in said city on the fifth day of April, twenty twenty-two, of, uh, of a proposal for the incurring of debtness and the issuance of general obligation bonds of said city and evidence thereof, and the aggregate amount not to exceed fifty million dollars upon the ascent to the said proposal of two-thirds of the qualified electors of said city voting thereon and contain an emergency clause, that is the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Dispense with line item fourteen, perfection consent.
Board Bill one thirty-four sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance repealing ordinance number six six nine six nine, ordinance number six six four one five, ordinance number six four six zero three, and ordinance number six five one one eight, which latter ordinance amended and restated ordinance number six four six zero three, desiring the Special allocations fund for Delmore East, Delmore East Loop, Barton Street Lofts, and Shoto Compton redevelopment areas, terminating the designation of a portion of the City of St. Louis, Missouri as redevelopment areas and authorizing certain actions relating thereto. Board Bill one thirty-seven sponsored by Alderman Boyd and ordinance determining that the tax increment financing plans listed in Exhibit A or making satisfactory progress except as noted under the proposed time schedule for completion of projects therein. Board Bill one twenty-one sponsored by Alderman Clark Hubbard and the following Alderman persons, Davis, Howard, Spencer, P Boyd, Bosley, Mohammed, Oldenburg, Norrion, Page, Vaquaro, Gunther, and Rice. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Enforcement, authorizing the fire chief on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute assist, assistance to firefighters grant with the U.S. Department of Homeland Security of appropriating said funds and the required city match for said funds and authorizing fire chiefs to expend the appropriate funds by entering into contracts or otherwise for grant purposes and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one thirty-one sponsored by Alderman Howard, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Enforcement, authorizing the director of the Department of Public Safety or his designated on behalf of the City of St. Louis to enter into and execute on U.S. Department of Justice, twenty twenty-one, Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant to accept funds awarded, appropriating said funds, and authorizing the Department of Public Safety to expand the appropriate funds by, for allowed purposes and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill ninety-eight sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Enforcement, authorizing the Department of Health to accept the twenty twenty-one Medical Reserve Corp's COVID-nineteen Operational Readiness Award of ten thousand dollars for the National Association of County and City Health Issues for the grant purposes of providing fund assistance for approved activities that build operation readiness capabilities to meet the COVID-nineteen emergency preparedness and response, authorizing the expenditure of Nacho or Grant funds for grant purposes and to fulfill the obligations of said grant and contain an emergency clause. Board Bill one thirty-five sponsored by Alderman Ingracia, Alderman Green, Alderman Rice, Alderman Todd, and Alderman Gunther. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen Enforcement, authorizing Department of Health to accept a closing the gap with social determinants of health, food and nutrition grant of eighty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars from the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention containing, uh, emergency, an, an emergency clause. Board Bill one twenty-seven sponsored by Alderman Peel, an ordinance recommended by the Board of, by the public service, by the Board of Public Service to conditionally vacate above surface circuits and subsurface rights for vehicle equestrian and pedestrian travel in Pacific Avenue from Papin Street to Shoto Avenue in the City of St. Louis, Missouri, as herein after described in accordance with Charter Authority and in conformity with Section one four of Article twenty-one of the Charter and imposing certain conditions on such vacation. Board Bill one forty-one sponsored by Alderman Middlebrook, and ordinance authorizing and directing the Director Streets to permanently close, barricade, or otherwise impede the flow of traffic on the one seventy block of East Grant Avenue by blocking said traffic flow at the intersection of East Grant Avenue and North Second Street. Board Bill one twenty-eight sponsored by Alderman Gunther and Alderman Martin, and ordinance amending ordinance number six seven three zero zero, which ordinance relates to original lease agreement dated January the seventeenth, two thousand and seven, to be extended in the second mutual option between the City of St. Louis, Missouri and S.I. Warehousing Company doing business as Archway Fleeting and Harbor Service, a Missouri corporation containing severability clause. Board Bill one twenty-nine sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance recommended and approved by the Board of Estmen Enforcement, authorizing and directing the Director of Airports and the Controller of the City of St. Louis, owner and operator of the St. Louis Lambert International Airport, to enter into and execute on behalf of the city a memorandum of agreement to reimburse between the city and U.S. Customs and Border Protection containing a severability clause and an emergency clause, that is the extent of perfection consent calendar.
All, Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move that we adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from tenth, second about Alderman from twenty-second, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill one twenty-three sponsored by Alderman Calder, Alderman Davis, Alderman Ingracia, and Alderman Page, an ordinance approving the petition of an owner of certain real property to amend the petition for creation, extension, renewal, and establishment of the downtown St. Louis Community Improvement District, Inc., contain a severability clause and contain an emergency clause.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill one twenty-three.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I move to perfect Board Bill one twenty-three.
Move by Alderman from the seventh.
Second.
Second about Alderman from the nineteenth, Alderman from the seventh, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, um, Board Bill one twenty-three, um, uh, is the uh, extension and, uh, modification of the existing downtown community improvement district. Um, for those of you that aren't familiar, uh, most of downtown is, is covered by a, a large community improvement district. It's not a sales tax like many of the, the SIDS we're familiar with, it's actually a property tax, it's a, it's an assessment on property. Uh, it's based on square footage of the first several floors of the buildings. Um, it's been in existence since the early two thousands, it's been renewed a couple of times, uh, and this Board Bill one twenty-three is the culmination of the effort, uh, and, and a lot of hard work by, by members of downtown community, including, you know, my, my colleagues from the fifth, sixth, and nineteenth, um, to get this thing renewed and extended for twenty years, um. So what one twenty-three would do is, and, and, and to be clear, this was, there was a, there were petitions circulated. Um, we would have liked to have been doing this earlier, but with COVID, it was uh, very difficult to track down particularly some of the commercial property owners, you know, who own, you know, large buildings downtown, and many of whom are not currently going to those buildings due to the ongoing pandemic. Uh, but we ultimately, uh, gathered enough petitions, as you know, signatures from, um, from property owners in the district, uh, to get the fifty percent plus one, uh, threshold needed uh, and submitted, and those signatures were reviewed and verified by the city counselor uh, and the assessor's office, uh, and, and certified last week, which is when we finally, uh, voted it out of committee. Um, this has not been without controversy, uh, as many of you have probably seen in the paper, there's a, there's a, a, a very vocal and active group of, um, of detractors, those who don't like, uh, the existing CID, um, you know, and, and they have varying reasons, some of its personalities, some of its, they don't like paying taxes. Um, some think it could be done better, and, 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 and they had some valid criticisms, and, and one of the things that this, uh, this renewal of the CID does is seek to incorporate, uh, some of those, some of those ideas into the CID going forward, uh, most notably, um, narrowing the focus. So the CID in, 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 in the past has tried to do a lot of things, it's safety and security, it's beautification, it's infrastructure, it's economic development downtown, uh, it's marketing. It was trying to do frankly, a lot of things, and, and some of them didn't do particularly well. So what this new, what the, the renewed CID will do is focus on the things it's actually good at, and that's uh, clean and safe downtown, so both, uh, the, the clean teams that you see out, uh, picking up trash throughout downtown on a daily basis, um, continuing to do secondary security, investing in camera technology, license plate readers, uh, and supporting our downtown bike unit, uh, which the CID pays for the, uh, bike units, uh, headquarters downtown on Washington Avenue, uh, also equipment for the, the bike unit and, and specialized training for those officers. Um, this CID will also, and, and it's renewed form, um, focus on, uh, continued beautification, planters downtown, we're in the process of adding a lot of trees, uh, that will be maintained by, by a landscaping company that works with the CID. Uh, and also infrastructure, the CID provides infrastructure matching funds, uh, for projects in the downtown area. Uh, and, and most notably recently, it's, it's provided, uh, a substantial part of the local match for the Seventh Street Expansion, which received funding from East West Gateway, uh, and is also was provided a local ma- part of the local match uh, for the, uh, cycle track corridor that we're doing along Tucker, that has also received federal funding through East West Gateway. Um, so, we're here today asking for your support, uh, there's a companion bill, War- War Bill one twenty-four that I'll talk about later, that's a little more complicated, um, but, but no, you know, this CID is critical to downtown. Um, it, it, you know, the, the supplemental services provided frankly will not be provided by the city. So if we do not pass and extend this CID, uh, come January one, you know, we're gonna find ourselves in a situation where, um, you know, we're gonna have, we already have enough challenges downtown with crime and, and other, and other issues. Um, and, and, and the continued stay at home, you know, the workforce is not coming to the office regularly, uh, losing the CID and losing the supplemental service it provides, I think would be very, uh, damaging to downtown. Um, so I'm happy to answer any questions, and I, I look forward to a healthy discussion, thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Mr. President, and, uh, members of board. Uh, as the clerk and, uh, my good friend, the Alderman from the seventh indicated, uh, I am in full support of Board Bill number one twenty-three, uh, to the point that I co-sponsored it, and I will vote in favor of it at the appropriate time. I totally agree that having a, uh, an effective, uh, CID in downtown St. Louis is critical. However, I want to be, uh, very transparent that I stand in firm opposition to Board Bill number one twenty-four, and I will continue that conversation when we address one twenty-four. I just wanted to let everyone know that I am in favor of one twenty-three, uh, because of the importance of a CID to downtown. But, uh, one twenty-four is a totally different matter, and I will address that at the appropriate time, thank you.
All right, thank you, um. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the seventh, you recognize the close.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Hand raised button. I'm sorry. This is already.
Okay, I've already recognized them to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, I renew my motion.
All right, it's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, second it by Alderman from nineteenth, that we perfect Board Bill one twenty-three, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 No.
Motion carries. Right, um.
Board Bill one twenty-four sponsored by Alderman Calder, and ordinance extending the term of the existence of the downtown St. Louis Community Improvement District, Inc., contain a severability clause and an emergency clause.
Alderman from the seventh, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill one twenty-four.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, uh, I move to perfect Board Bill one twenty-four.
Move by Alderman from the seventh, entertain a second on the motion.
Second.
Seconded by the Alderman from the sixth, any discussion? Alderman from the seventh.
Yes.
Thank, thank you, Mr. President, members of the board, so Board Bill one twenty-four is sort of a companion bill to Board Bill one twenty-three. Um, the board bill we just discussed and voted, what we're one twenty-three, uh, extended the life of the Community Improvement District for twenty years. Um, it's extended the life of the tax, the, well, it's an assessment, um, on the property owners for ten years. So at the ten-year mark, um, based on what we just approved, the downtown community improvement district property tax assessment will have to be reauthorized um, by, by the property owners in the district, uh, through the similar process, they'll have to get, gather signatures and everything else. Um, as I mentioned, there's a vocal, uh, opposition, uh, of some downtown property owners to this. Uh, they've been fighting tooth and nail for years, uh, to, to get rid of the existing CID without any sort of plan for what they would replace it with. Um, and that's the source of litigation currently, there's been a number of emergency, uh, hearings, uh, as of late, they've tried to stop the, um, the committee hearing that we had, uh, last week, um, they, I anticipate will probably sue over uh, the signatures submitted that have been reviewed and verified by the city counselor. Um, so what Board Bill one twenty-four is seeking to do is simply extend the existence of the CID, not the tax, you cannot tax without going to approval of the voters, but state law and CID Act and a recent change to the CID Act allows, um, a, a, a legislative body such as ourselves to extend the life of a CID, not the tax, as I mentioned earlier, the CID is scheduled to expire at the end of the year. Um, now, we just passed Board Bill one twenty-three, so my hope is now it will get extended for twenty years. But in the event that that gets mired in court and tied up, and there's any sort of stay issued by a judge, we'd like the ability to spend down the existing money that the CID has. So currently, the CID has roughly a million dollars in the bank, and tax bills for twenty twenty-one just went out. So there'll be another three million or so collected, you know, before the end of the year and into the first quarter of next year. Um, if the CID expires and is tied up in court, we have no ability to, to spend those funds. So what Board Bill one twenty-four is seeking to do is to extend the life of the CID, um, not the tax, so we can spend those funds, it's sort of a belt and suspenders approach, uh, in. not the tax, so we can spend those funds. It's sort of a belt and suspenders approach in case one twenty-three gets tied up in court. That said, I know there's been some heartburn, as written, one twenty-four extends the life of the SIDS for twenty years. It it does not need twenty years to spend, you know, roughly three or four million dollars. So I have, I have an amendment that I've drafted that is in your inboxes that would simply modify this bill, one twenty-four, instead of extending the SIDS for twenty years, extend it for three years. I've talked to the SIDS staff and their legal counsel, and they believe, you know, in the event that one twenty-three is tied up and the SIDS, the SIDS future is in in limbo and in the courts, at least they will have a couple of years to spend down the funding they've got that they've collected, you know, in years past. So, Mr. President, I I don't know if I should offer my amendment now, or if you want to have discussion first. It's a very simple amendment. It's literally one line changing a date.
The president stepped out. Alderman from the seventh, why don't you go ahead and make a motion for your amendment, then we can have discussion.
Okay, thank you. I move to amend Board Bill one twenty-four pursuant to the amendment placed in your drop boxes, which would simply amend Board Bill page five, line four, by striking out the words December thirty-first, twenty forty-one, and replacing those with December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
It's been moved out from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the nineteenth. So we've already had discussion. Hands were raised prior to the amendment. Alderman from the fifth ward, you want to speak to the amendment, and Alderman third? Otherwise, I'll come back to you on the full bill.
I'll, I'll wait and offer my comments on the full bill and amendment, given that I addressed both.
Well, the amendment is before, so if you'd like to speak to the amendment, go right ahead.
I will only, thank you for that, Mr. Chair. The only thing I would say on the amendment, that I do not think that the amendment materially changes anything. It really doesn't matter whether the SIDS is, the entity is extended for twenty years, or ten years, or five years, or three years. The principles are the same. And I will share more information about that. So I rise in opposition to the amendment.
Okay. Alderman from the third.
Thank you. So with Alderman Page being someone who closely works within that area and frequently talks to the the downtown neighborhood association and works with those individuals, there is some information that I'd like to provide, but if he is going to speak on this particular bill and give information about it specifically in opposition, then I think that would definitely be not necessarily worth a little bit more, but most certainly would, he probably have a little bit more information than I myself on the the current discussion, based on his involvement currently. So I'll yield and wait for that discussion to happen, and if I have things to add, specifically, I'll do so. But currently, at this particular point, just so I can be transparent with the board and individuals who are watching, I have had conversation with individuals from the downtown neighborhood association. There, there definitely seems to be some opposing sides to this, and residents feeling some type of way about.
Alderman from the third ward, Alderman from the third ward, are you speaking on the amendment?
I'm, I'm speaking on the, the Board Bill as a whole, and the amendment is included.
We're on the amendment right now.
Okay, well, I, once again, I'll, I'll wait, and now you, back to you.
I'm seeing no other hands. Alderman from the seventh, you recognize the close on your amendment.
Yeah, I move to adopt amendment number one to Board Bill one twenty-four.
Okay, it's been moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the nineteenth, that we adopt amendment number one. All in favor?
Aye.
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 I've already called for the, the vote. So. Well, I've already called for the vote, and it, this is crazy on Zoom. You know what? I'm going to take a point of privilege and go back and do a roll call, because it's kind of hard to hear everybody and even see everybody for the record. So Madam Court, please call the roll.
Alderman Tyus? Alderman Middlebrook? Alderman Bosley?
No.
Alderman Evans? Alderman Page?
No.
Alderman Iglesias?
Aye.
Alderman Carter?
Aye.
Alderman Rice?
Aye.
Alderman Gunther?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Aye.
Alderman Martin?
Aye.
Alderman Stevens?
Aye.
Alderman Schweitzer?
Aye.
Alderman Howard?
Aye.
Alderman Green?
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg?
Aye.
Alderman Peel? Alderman Todd? Alderman Davis?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer? Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Velkorow?
Aye.
Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Cone?
Present.
Alderman Clark Cover?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Navarro? President Reed? Alderman Tyus? Alderman Middlebrook? Alderman Evans? Alderman Peel? Alderman Todd? Alderman Spencer? I'm sorry, Alderman Spencer, I didn't hear you.
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Aye.
Alderman Mohammed? Alderman Navarro?
Aye.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. President Reed? Nineteen, I votes? Three no votes and one voted present.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion of Alderman from the seventh ward, and now what's before us is Board Bill one twenty-four as amended. And with that, I'm going to go back to Alderman from the seventh.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I mean, do you want me to, I guess, do you want me to make a motion again to perfect one twenty-four as amended, or just explain what we're doing?
Again, explain what we're doing, then we'll take questions from the.
Okay, I'll be brief. Yeah, so thank you, everybody. So what we just did with amending Board Bill one twenty-four, simply, you know, I'm attempting to address concerns I've heard, which I I get, that extending the life of the SIDS, if the SIDS gets tied up in court, you know, it's renewal. All we're seeking to do is make sure we can spend down the existing dollars. That's all that that this bill is seeking to do is give us a three-year off-ramp to wind up the SIDS affairs if the SIDS, for some reason, is invalidated. I don't think that's going to happen. This is sort of a backup approach. One twenty-three extended the SIDS for twenty years. All this bill is doing is saying, we're extending it legislatively through our powers granted by the legislature for three years. We're not extending any sort of tax, just giving the SIDS the ability to spend down the dollars it has already collected. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, Alderman from the fifth, you are recognized.
All right, I'm back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me begin by going back to totally, total transparency as I began my comments on Board Bill number one twenty-three. In the interest of full transparency, let me say that I am a member of the Board of Directors of the current downtown SIDS. I totally agree with my learned colleague from the seventh ward on the importance of a, an effective SIDS to downtown St. Louis. Let me be further transparent by saying that I am not a member of any opposition group or anything of that nature. The notes I'm going to share with you now are purely from standpoint of principle, and also after hours, many hours, countless hours of conversations with and listening to my constituents. And I think you'll agree that I have a fiduciary responsibility to represent my constituents. So with that, I'm just going to share a few notes that will keep me from going on for one to two hours about this matter, and I know you'll appreciate that. First and foremost, petitions to extend the current downtown SIDS beyond the year twenty twenty-one were pursued and collected over several months, and that, that process was just concluded recently. This, the petitions were submitted to the city assessor, and the city assessor and the city attorney reviewed said petitions and confirmed that the SIDS did, did indeed have fifty-one plus percent of downtown property owners' signatures in favor of extending the SIDS beyond twenty twenty-one. Yay. Good, good deal. So from all I can gather, to me, my first two points about the petitions and about the legal opinion and the the, the fine-tooth comb with which the city assessor went through the petitions, those two points, to me, render Board Bill number one twenty-four moot and superfluous. I do not believe that reducing the term of the SIDS extended pursuant to Board Bill one twenty-four from twenty years to ten years to five years to three years addresses any of my concerns regarding that bill. So here's some further points. The funds currently in possession of the SIDS and those that will go into the possession of the SIDS with this year's assessments were raised by special assessment, and that assessment expires on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one. Now, by the, by the laws or the state statutes that I've been able to dig up, and I am not an attorney, by the way, but I can read, the, these funds must be returned to the property owners if by any means the SIDS fails. So at this point, the SIDS has fifty-one plus percent. So they're good to go. I think this is kind of invoking the dark side of the force to think that the SIDS is going to be overturned, the petition signatures are going to be overturned. So Board Bill one twenty-four does nothing to do, it has nothing to do with assessments. It's all about extending the life of the SIDS as an entity. Now, I've been advised that there is nothing in Missouri law that allows a SIDS to be extended and to carry over funds collected. In fact, it's my understanding that is retired, it is required to return the funds to the property owners at the end of the special assessment term, which is entirely different than the term of the SIDS. Now, next, Board Bill one twenty-four is only relevant, as my learned colleague said, if the court later determines that the city was incorrect when it verified the SIDS petition, because the petition did not include the required signatures. Well, that's, that's a point in the future and should be dealt with when and if this comes up. Next, I am very concerned about extending a SIDS in the method described by Board Bill one twenty-four, because it severely limits oversight of the SIDS by the property owners who are paying taxes into it by assessment. Next, I'm very concerned about the citywide precedent of extending a SIDS as described under Board Bill one twenty-four. And I know you'll be happy to learn that my last point is I am concerned about what will happen if we open the door in the city to extending SIDS in the manner proposed by one twenty-four. Think along with me for just a second. How will other sections of the city approach property tax-based SIDS? If they know that if some kind of way the voters do not, the property taxpayers do not sign enough petitions to extend the SIDS, then there are going to be some shenanigans to extend the life of the SIDS without their consent. What do you think that's going to happen? I think that's a, there's a distinct possibility that more people may consider property tax SIDS and other means, but look at what has happened to the city of St. Louis with property tax SIDS. There are portions, sections of this city in which property taxes are eleven, twelve, thirteen percent. And I represent that property tax SIDS that tax at this rate unduly impact low and moderate income people in our city. So I'm all for property tax-based SIDS that allow people.
Alderman.
That came in to interrupt it. But anyway, so I do not, I, I, I have a lot of reservations about property tax-based SIDS. I totally support, oh, I have reservations about sales tax-based SIDS, and I definitely support our property tax-based SIDS. So with that, without going any further, I kind of wanted to share with you some principles, some principled thinking. I didn't want to share a lot of legalese, because I am not a licensed attorney. And I would definitely appeal to you for your support. Join me in opposing Board Bill number one twenty-four, which I am convinced is bad legislation. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield back.
Thank you. Alderman from the third, you recognize.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to add on to that. We definitely have received emails, and I don't know if you can see me right now, but I will read a portion of one that I did get from one of the residents down here in downtown. I won't put that person's name out, but it says, as you no doubt know by now, there are two board bills up for consideration to renew and extend the downtown community improvement district. I don't know who all this was sent to, but could have been sent to multiple alderpeople. Says the first bill, Board Bill one twenty-three, does so by confirming that a majority of downtown property owners have signed a petition to renew the district. The second bill, Board Bill one twenty-four, extends the district without requiring the support of the property owners. We strongly dispute the findings that the majority of property owners actually supports the SIDS. Unfortunately, there are mechanisms in place to find out how the decision was made, if necessary, to appeal the city's determination. The ability to appeal this decision is an essential check and balance to confirm. The ability to appeal this decision is an essential check and balance to confirm that the decision was made appropriately and legally. Cid proponents have put forward Board Bill one twenty-four that they freely admit isn't intended to foreclose any appeal of the majority finding it is fundamentally at odds with the democratic principles and essentially deprives the downtown community of its property rights under the law. I'm part of a group, Citizens for the Greater Downtown St. Louis, that is made up of residents and businesses who are concerned about the future of downtown and believe that the Cid has been ineffective about confronting the problems in the neighborhood. It is instructive that nearly all of the proponents of the Cid extension that testified at the Ways and Means Committee hearing are either board members, employees, or contractors. Conversely, the dozens who offered testimony opposed to the Cid extensions are residents, businesses, commercial property owners, and others who have been affected by the steady decline of our neighborhood. There are a few other things there without going, uh, too deep into names and things like that. I generally try to make decisions based off what the majority of the community is speaking about and is talking about and the things, you know, you never get one hundred percent um, community support on anything, you know, we've got millions and millions of dollars right now that we're shedding out and trying to figure out how to divvy out to make the city a better place. And you have multiple organizations trying to figure out how it is that they can, uh, provide uh, uh, more resources for the mission that them themselves are trying to carry out to help whatever it is that they are, are working towards achieving here in the city of St. Louis. We all have different opinions on different things. One of the things that is extremely important though is when we have any organization within the city speaking monetarily about what it is that they feel like is an investment where they live and those dollars not being properly and ad- adequately um, uh, represented. And they themselves feel like they are the representatives of those dollars and they feel like that there are instances that have played out in years and we all see it. There's a hell of a lot going on downtown. You got shootings, you got people getting robbed, cars getting broken into. They, some folks feel like that those dollars have not been serving uh, the down- stop. I'm sorry. Some folks feel like those, um, services or those dollars have not been servicing the community in a way where it's representative of what is the downtown population is looking for. If it's safety, if it's, um, uh, you know, other things that they want pots or flowers, whatever it is that they added, whatever it is that they're asking for. Um, it, it would seem, especially in our communities, you know, we live in communities where everybody's not always speaking up. We live in communities where we have a lot of things going on and we don't have as much organizing as we could based off individuals um, uh, amount of energy and resources that they have to put into whatever it is the mission is. So, you know, when you do have organizations that speak up and say, hey, we wanna take a second look at this and give enough information to where, you know, it makes not necessarily, uh, sense, but it makes uh, their argument credible based on where it is that they live and what it is that they are doing specifically uh, in regards to what they're asking us to do. This isn't just, you know, some folks who just live within the community. These are people who actually pay some of these taxes and they live down there. I don't live downtown. You know, where I live at, I'm constantly dealing with shootings. I'm constantly dealing with, I got the highest homicide rate in the entire city. You know, there's no way that I would impose a tax on people and tell them that this is the adequate way or the, the, the best way we can spend these dollars and then years later, they come back and say, hey, we got a few things done, but let's kinda tweak this process a little bit. Let's figure this out or figure that out. Let's figure out a few more ways that we can spend these dollars so we all can be on one page. I don't think that the downtown, uh, let me make sure that I say this name correctly. Uh, the downtown community improvement district, no, 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 that's not it. There's a name. Oh, the Citizens for Greater Downtown, I'm sorry. I don't think that they are in, in opposition because of the people that are running it necessarily by themselves. It's, it's, uh, it's, it's, it, I think it comes down to them once again, not feeling like their voices are being heard. That is the, you know, my sentiments from it after having, uh, you know, some emails and conversations with, with some of these individuals. Um, me being at some point in time, if it goes that way, I may end up representing a portion of downtown. Um, who knows how this thing is going to go. I'm not a thousand percent sure specifically, uh, all of the issues or problems that exist within the Cid and what has happened over these years. But I do know that there are issues and problems that exist downtown that mirror some of the issues and problems that exist where I live and things didn't used to be that particular way. Uh, I, I'm not an individual who, who is happy about the things that happen downtown because now they mirror what happens in my side of town and you can feel me. I'd rather them not happen at all. But it's an understanding that, you know, what we see and when we say something about the South Side or the Central West End and we say things look better or seem to be organized and working better on that particular part of town, that is basically saying that why can't we have those same amount of services? And we have constantly said downtown is getting the most police. They are getting, uh, the most responses from emergency services. They're getting the most organizational uh, uh, opportunities here to create communities that last and bring revenue and generate revenue back to the city. And we look at that as a template. So the fact that that template is something that seems to be failing like that right now. We all are trying to figure out how to create better communities where we actually live. Downtown is all of us down, all of our downtown. We work there. We go to City Hall downtown. We travel through downtown from, to get to from point A to point B. That is the, the, uh, how would I say, uh, that is the picture of the city that people see when they're looking at coming to St. Louis. So downtown is very, very, very important, just like all of our neighborhoods and communities are at the same time. But when you have people who live downtown and are supposed to be the show horse of the city and the Central West End and they're saying, hey, we got issues and problems and this money isn't being utilized correctly. Um, that's definitely something to, to, to look into and try to work with those individuals who are involved because everybody ain't involved. People see shootings and all kinda stuff and they go sit in their house and say, the city's getting bad. I need to figure out a way to move. Everybody's not involved. So when you do get individuals who are actively involved, you get people who care enough to send out an email and not a two-sentence email, not a one paragraph, but multiple paragraphs. And then they have individuals who also feel the same way, they send out emails and, 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 and opposition or uh, or, or voting for and, you know, uh, for whatever it is that we are doing, board bills, different initiatives that we put forth. Um, when those aren't chain emails, like we all have gotten, a hundred people sending us the same email. It's just verbatim, word for word. These people took the time and said different things. These individuals took the time and not only conversated with each other about whatever the issue is, but they also had their own separate opinions on how we get to a place to where this could be done a little bit more amicably. So, you know, with those things being said, those are things that, that make us who we are as Alder people by listening to our people. What gives us our power? It's being able to say, hey, I got fifteen people that agree with me because they propositioned me and came to me about it. Now, if the majority is, you know, you got twenty or thirty that disagree with that, then you bring those twenty or thirty and say, hey, I got thirty people that disagree with the fifteen. So the power comes from the actual people and the people who are willing to speak up, just like we know the squeaky's wheel gets the oil. True. You know, these individuals feel aggrieved by some of the situation, by some of the, 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 you know, what's going on and they feel like that this wasn't adequately brought forth legally. And there has to be some sort of a, uh, thought out there that that may be possible. If we're putting together a board bill right now saying, in the event, in the event that one twenty-three is not substantiated in court, we do got one twenty-four. So either way, we beat the people. That's not, I don't like that. And, you know, that's how individuals are seeing it. We put together another board bill just in case this one isn't, isn't substantiated. If it's held, if, if, if they went through all the proper procedures and protocols to ensure that every signature was right, then there shouldn't be, uh, uh, another board bill that we're trying to put in place to get ahead of the board bill that we're putting in place right now that's supposed to be, you know, right. It should be right. These people should have the opportunity as, as citizens that live for it to be able to say, this is, uh, done right and I still don't like it. If that's what it is, but to say that there are predatory things that have happened and we all are dealing with people telling us every day, we didn't done something illegal or you this or you sold out to this or that. Folks are always on our necks. Rightfully so. It just is what it is. We deal with a lot of money in the city and we make a lot of decisions. You'll never make one hundred percent of the people happy, but it is extremely important when individuals are saying that things have been done unjust illegally, that we address those things and ensure at bare minimum, there is some, some paperwork, there's some that we wrote down and said, hey, no, this was done legally. You know, challenge it, whatever it is that you're going to do specifically us as a board, where we make these type of decisions, where we all aren't involved in these Cids. Everybody here doesn't know everything about what's going on in the community improvement district downtown. They got community improvement districts of their own that they're trying to work the kinks out on. They're trying to figure out how it is they can enhance their own neighborhoods. So when we do come to, come to each other and generally there is an opposition to community improvement districts. You know, since I've been in office, I would say maybe one time other than this one, there, there has been any organizations that that got together and said, hey, we need to stop this, pause this for a second. Let's have some conversation about what these particular dollars are doing because the whole city ain't paying for this. The whole city's not footing this bill that we're asked to foot. So, you know, with that being said, we're not dealing with what we normally would deal with as Alder people. You have individuals that are bringing forth issues and problems that, you know, once again, I haven't heard. I, I, I have not heard at any time since I've been here that the downtown, uh, community improvement district may not necessarily be mis- be misuse in funds, but individuals feel like those funds could be used differently. Um, and, you know, feel some type of way about what it is that they are giving out based on, um, the performance uh, that, that, that happens or occurs after they spend those dollars or services that they believe should be rendered. Um, so, you know, with that, I, I most certainly stand in opposition, as you saw in one twenty-three uh, and one twenty-four. I do hope that there is, it, there isn't any uh, bad adverse effects if there isn't a Cid, uh, that isn't replaced by, by this Cid because that is also one of the, the things that we have to deal with. We don't want an increase in crime. We don't want individuals, um, to, to cut down one thing in spite of another and end up with less than what they had before. That's definitely not the intent. Last thing I want, especially with me not living downtown. Of course, I hear about things. I'm right kinda down the street from downtown, but as you know, in St. Louis, you can live fifteen minutes away from one of the richest areas and be in the poorest area and just watch those people flourish. We got the Delmar Divide and a gang of other things. So, you know, uh, it is an important, very, very important piece to have extra dollars going downtown. You know, our police, we need more police presence. We need a lot of the other improvements that, uh, that come along with having those extra dollars that fortunately, I mean unfortunately, that all of our communities just can't support. Some of us can't. You know, some of us don't have extra dollars for extra police. Some of us, you know, a lot of us know and we wish we did. Those things are important because if people are leaving downtown like forty going west, they definitely not moving into our neighborhood saying, I wanna leave downtown and come move to the third. You know, those things are not happening, but you know, eventually I do wanna see it and I do want individuals to feel comfortable enough um, to feel like that the city is working collectively on how it is that we use dollars in the form of public safety and securing one of the most important pieces of our city, which is that downtown, not necessarily population, but the infrastructure that lives downtown. People are always, none of us will be here a hundred years from now. We all gonna be dead and gone. So whatever it is that we create today and, uh, the Cids that we create, the different opportunities that we create, the different resources that we provide, those are what the individuals that will seed us will be utilizing. Whatever it is that we's laid down as infrastructure, some type of a foundation for the city. So, you know, with that being said, it's been some years since the Cid has come up. If we're talking about reenacting this thing for twenty years, then you need to have some teenagers at the table who are twenty years old that'll be here when they forty. They're not individuals that's fifty years old that's gonna be seventy when this Cid ends. You know, just being realistic, there needs to be some type of a conversation while people are agreed on how we get to a point to where this can be something that we all are working towards making sure is successful. Just because we're at odds with particular things doesn't mean that we shouldn't be working towards ensuring that there is success at the end of the road because we all lose when the, the Cid loses. We all lose when there isn't improvements in our neighborhoods, downtown or wherever it is that we live at within the city of St. Louis. This is one of those things where it's us against them or them against us. We're all working towards trying to figure out how do we get the best out of our city and the individuals who represent the city and what it is that we are organizing, working towards and the resources that are coming to our city every day. Um, so I talk a whole lot, as you all know, I'm sorry, I had to get my forethought out. Uh, that being said, I will, I will yield, but I am firmly against one twenty-three and one twenty-four unless there's some conversation with these people who are shelling out their dollars and we get something in writing saying, hey, we talked, we had some conversation, this is what it looks like. This is where the odds are and we can pick and choose realistically on what seems the most uh, reasonable because some people do have reasonable expect- unreasonable ex- unreasonable expectations, I'm sorry. You know, we wa- we've talked to a lot of constituents. People won't and, and think that we can just hop in an airplane and fly it because we Alderman, you know, we just can run the ball. We got all the money. We can point at a house and get it fixed. It doesn't work like that. So, you know, with, with all those things being said, I appreciate the opportunity to speak and I, you know, once again, I'm, I'm in opposition of one twenty-three and one twenty-four. And I also encourage my colleagues, if you haven't seen the emails, type in one twenty-three or one twenty-four in your email, right? We read this stuff. Um, whether it's from one or two people or, you know, whatever you got, I'm not sure who got what. But it is important for us to be informed about decisions that affect our people and what they spend their money on every single day. Uh, and intend on getting back from the city in form of taxes in the areas that they're spending their money in. Uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you. Alderman, Alderman from the eighth, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, with the ultimate from the seventh yield for a question?
Uh, yes. Ald- Alderman from seven, you will yield. Alderman from the eighth, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, Alderman, I am wondering, I'm looking at the bill here in our, um, in our drive and I'm wondering if you can point me, I, I'm looking for this first, a specific provision that says that, um, property or that the taxes will not continue to be collected for those three years, but they'll just be spending down. I, I couldn't find that language in there. I mean, I'm wondering if you could point me to it.
So it's probably not in the bill, but the Cid Act under chapter sixty-seven of state law, you know, requires, uh, voter approval to extend the life of any tax. Sorry, I gotta fly. Uh, to extend the life of any tax. And so with, you know, all this one twenty-four does is extend the term of the Cid, not the actual tax. That has to be done through petition in accordance with the Cid Act under chapter sixty-seven.
Okay. Um, and do you know, do you have any idea how much money the, the Cid currently has on hand or will have on hand at the end of the year that would still
The Cid's got a roughly million and a half dollars in the bank and then assessments, uh, where there, the, the assessment just went out, you know, a couple of weeks ago. Um, and that will be roughly another three million dollars. That, that's, that's sort of the annual assessment, what it, what it, what's levied. Um, contrary to what my, our colleague from the fifth said, uh, just to clear this up, that the Cid, i- if the Cid expires on December thirty-first, the money does not get returned to the property owners. Uh, we would have to come back, if we don't pass one twenty-four. The reason I'm pushing to get this done is in the event that, that there's some disruption, um, through court process and challenge, which as the Alderman from the, from the third read, I mean, that is fully the intent of, of the opposition group is to try to muddy the waters and disrupt the services and stop this existing Cid. Well, we're, what I'm trying to accomplish here is to make sure, even if the Cid is mired in, in litigation, that we can, without a disruption in services, continue to spend the existing dollars that are in the, in the bank and that are being collected this, through this year's assessments. Um, without one twenty-four, we could find ourselves in a situation where, okay, the Cid's mired in litigation. We have a disruption in services. We have this money. It does not get returned to the property owners, contrary to what the, my colleague from the fifth said. In reality, what we'd have to do is come back with a different bill to say, okay, we got this money. Here's how we propose spending it. By the time that gets done, I mean, at the earliest, it'd be sometime in the spring, you know, we could've gone months without trash service downtown, without, uh, providing the, the, the bike services and the, the bike patrol operations and the supplemental security services that the Cid pays for. That's what I'm trying to avoid. This is sort of a stopgap measure.
Okay. And so the, the original intent on, on extending to twenty forty-one, if, if you weren't gonna be able to collect taxes, then, um, you know, three million dollars isn't gonna last
Correct. Yeah, a- and, and it was written as twenty years because you were just mirroring the language in, in in Board Bill one twenty-three. But I mean, I've, I've spoken with the Cid, I've spoken with legal counsel for the Cid and yes, we all agree. You don't need twenty years to spend three million dollars.
Right, right. Okay. Alright, well, um, thank you for answering my questions. I appreciate it.
Any fur- any further discussion, any further discussion? Uh, Alderman from the seventh, you're recognized to close.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Um, I appreciate the discussion on this and, and my colleague from the fifth's passion. Um, a- a- and, and I just to briefly address some of the opposition to this. Look, this is, this is not like we've rammed this through without, without lengthy discussion. I mean, I can't even tell you how many times members of the Cid, legal counsel for the Cid, myself, have sat down with those who oppose this existing Cid. Um, it's, I mean, dozens of meetings with individuals, with them as a group. There's been mediations involving the city counselors. Um, whenever we think we're making progress, uh, the, the, the purported Citizens for Greater Downtown simply move the goalpost and, and we're to the point where, you know, if you're not gonna negotiate in good faith, um, we're gonna move on. I, I think we've through the, the changes in the management plan, adopted many of the, uh, the suggestions that they had for how the money should be spent, how the board should be governed, but simply it's never enough. Then it's something else. So we find ourselves here today where not everybody's happy. And generally, I think in the legislative process, if, if everybody's, uh, if, if no one's a hundred percent happy, that's probably a good thing and we've done our jobs. Um, there is no effort to do an end run around the voters and the property, the, the taxpayers in the districts. All we're trying to do in one twenty-four is ensure that if, if for some reason one twenty-three gets mired in litigation, which the opponents have already said, they're, they're gonna fight tooth and nail because they don't want this Cid to continue. They want this to go away and they're not gonna be happy until they've got a Cid that they control one hundred percent. Um, and, and frankly, I just, I don't see that happening. If there was such a great proposal Um and and frankly, I just, I don't see that happening. If there was such a great proposal out there, I'm sure we would have heard it by now. Um when I look at at the leaders downtown, uh and I don't just mean, I don't mean political leaders, I mean business leaders. Uh major residential landlords, almost all of them are in support of this CID. Our major employers are in support of this. Um uh our our major entertainment venues are in support of continuing this. We have uh major landlords and property owners that have signed on to this. Um and and including uh uh the Downtown Neighborhood Association Chairwoman, LaShawna Lewis, she is supportive of this. So we've we've even got a split at the DNA with which uh our colleague from the fifth uh uh is is a staff member. So what I would ask is that we please uh perfect Board Bill one twenty-four. Uh as amended, uh as a stopgap, so we can ensure we don't lose any critical services for the next three years. Uh if if for some reason our CID renewal gets mired in litigation. And with that, uh I renew my motion.
Been uh moved by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by the all the one from six, that we perfect Board Bill one twenty-four. As as amended. There's been a request for roll call. Madam clerk, please call the roll.
All the woman tires. All the woman Middlebrook. Alderman Bosley.
No.
All the woman Evans. Alderman Page.
No.
All the woman Gracia.
Aye.
Alderman Carter.
Aye.
All the woman Rice.
Pass.
Alderman Gunther.
No.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
All the woman Martin.
Aye.
Alderman Stevens.
Pass.
All the woman Switzer.
No.
All the woman Howard.
Aye.
All the woman Green.
No.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
All the woman Peel.
Present.
Thank you. Alderman Todd. All the woman Davis.
Aye.
All the woman Spencer.
No.
Thank you. Alderman Mohammed.
Aye.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Macaro.
Aye.
Alderman Ryan.
No.
Alderman Cone.
Pass.
All the woman Clark Hubbard.
No.
All the woman Boyd.
Aye.
All the woman Navarro.
No.
President Reed.
Aye.
All the woman Tires. All the woman Middlebrook. All the woman Evans. All the woman Rice.
Present.
Alderman Stevens.
No.
Alderman Todd.
No.
Alderman Boyd.
I'm sorry, I thought I voted, I was on mute. Uh President. Did you hear me? Uh Sirita, Alderman Todd.
Alderman Todd, you were no correct.
Yes, okay.
Alderman Cone.
Present.
Eleven I votes. Eleven no votes and four voted present.
By your vote, you fail to stay in the motion, Alderman from the seventh and.
Mr. Chairman's point of order, I I may have counted wrong. Oh, never mind. I got it. Disregard.
All right, all right. Uh failed to stay in the motion, Alderman from the seventh. Uh perfection of Board Bill one twenty-four as amended.
Board Bill one zero one as amended sponsored by Alderman Ballmer and President Reed. An ordinance pertaining to ward boundaries for the city of St. Louis, repealing ordinance number six eight nine eight one. Codified as chapter two point one two of the Revise Code of the City of St. Louis. Twenty twenty anno establishing a new ward boundaries with an emergency clause.
Uh Alderman from tenth, you recognize on the perfection of Board Bill one oh one as amended.
We do have amendments for this, as we're all quite aware of.
Well, you wanna make the motion?
I will make a motion that we uh I move to adopt Board Bill one oh one as amended.
Be perfected, it's been moved by the Alderman.
Second.
Tenth, second about all the one from the fourteenth. Alderman from tenth, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. As we're all familiar with this board uh and what we had our wonderful first part of the meeting on, we do have amendments to this board. Bill, uh we, I believe, Mr. President, we should probably take the amendments up and then go into full discussion after that, correct?
Uh yes.
All right, amendment, and these will be in your drive. Uh amendment one to Board Bill number one oh one uh is what we uh discussed earlier today. Where we uh are exchanging the letters that we've used through the whole legislative process. In redistricting and assigning the numbers that we decided on this morning. Uh and so we will be, I believe everyone has it in front of them, we'll be striking out the ward A. Putting the number ward fourteen, ward B, ward thirteen, and so on down to uh through the thing. I don't know if we need to go that. I will uh.
Make the motion to.
Ma- make the motion to it to adopt to uh adopt a board amendment number one to Board Bill one oh one as amended.
It's been moved by Alderman from the tenth that we adopt amendment number one to Board Bill one oh one, entertain a second on that motion.
Second.
Second.
Second about Alderman from twenty-third and all the women from the fourteenth. Any discussion on amendment? It's been moved and seconded that we amend Board Bill one oh one as amendment, as amended. All in favor, signify to say an aye.
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 Pose. Motion carries. Thank you all for that, so we don't have to redo the coin toss anymore. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board for that. We'll now move to amendment number two to Board Bill one oh one as amended. Uh and this is also in your drive. Hope you've looked it up. What we have here are uh some Scrivener areas, errors, areas, errors. That we need to clean up uh when we're going through all these things. Uh sometimes the. The the text was not following uh the the software, so we had some things we do have to clean up. Uh in there uh and I believe that covers most everything of necessary. Do I need to read through all these? In in the.
Hopefully nobody requires you. You know.
We'll be happy to accommodate anyone, but I believe everything is there. And and again, we're we're just taking care of of. Details, dotting all the i's, crossing the t's uh to make sure that uh we have a, again. Uh a very good uh a board bill that is perfect in front of us, or not the perfect, but uh. Is there, with that, I'm I'm open to any questions if you like.
Would you like to make the motion to?
Sure, I will make a make a motion that we adopt amendment number two to Board Bill one oh one as amended.
Uh move by Alderman from the tenth, second about Alderman from the nineteenth, all the women from the thirteenth.
Thank you so much, Mr. President, members of the board. It says the ward letters as opposed to the ward numbers in this amendment. So I didn't know if those needed numbered.
Yeah, yeah. So with someone.
Amended.
Yeah, would you, would you like to make the motion to um to su- substitute the letters?
Yes, thank you. I will make the motion to substitute the appropriate numbers for the letters in. Board Bill one oh one as amended amendment two.
Second.
Perfect. By Alderman from the thirteenth, second about Alderman from the uh from the twenty-second. Any discussion on that amendment? All the one from eighth, is there a discussion on the amendment to the amendment?
Oh, sorry, not on the amendment to the amendment, but on the underlying amendment, yes.
Okay, all right. Uh it's been moved moved by the Alderman from the thirteenth, second about Alderman from twenty-second. All in favor, signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you for that, Alderman from thirteenth. That's good, good, uh good catch. All the one from the eighth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh with the ultimate from the tenth yield for questions?
Alderman from the tenth, will you yield a question to the Alderman?
It's the moment I live for.
All the one from the eighth, you are clear to go.
All right, thank you, Mr. President. Um thank you, Alderman. I, so I'm I'm looking at this amendment. And I'm having a hard time judging are, were any of the boundaries changed in these? In the, cuz these are, it looks like some pretty significant amendments. So did the wards change under this?
No, the the wards aren't changing. What is happening is we're trying to get the text to follow the software is my, it. It it doesn't, where, we had some wards actually ending up in the in the Mississippi River. We had to, you you with the the, when we're doing this, no, we're not changing ward boundaries. The map. Is is staying the same. We're merely making the text match up to the map. In other words, it it didn't follow directly. There were some, there actually are some streets in the city of St. Louis that don't have names, uh we found out. There are, you know, there's some imperfections in our our wonderful little bird here that uh came up as we were naming all these things and going through this. So again, their most, it's all Scrivener's where we're trying to make sure the text matches the map that we have. The map is the map. And then we're we're trying to make the, the the text was not following it perfectly. We, as I said, we ended up in the river. On one occasion, we had streets with no names uh as we were going through this process. And it, this is merely a uh trying to make the wording match the map. These are things that came up uh through uh all the uh the IT work. I believe it came up when we're handing things over to the council's office. That we found things where we're not perfect and we're we're, that's where all these little, it it looks like little changes, just a lot of words. It's just. Uh and I believe we have in the drive, the uh. Besides just the amendment, we we have the uh the other where.
The red line copy.
Yeah, the red line copy to show you what where where it was. So it's, it it's, I know it's a lot to throw out there on this day, but it. If you can take my word that the coin was definitely ahead, you can take my word that these are Scrivener's errors and that uh, believe me, of all the work we put into this thing. Uh you know, the the sixteen meetings and all the things we've gone through, the late nights. Uh this is just the, making sure that the the i's are dotted, the t's are crossed.
Okay.
Not the opposite way.
Thank you, I appreciate it. It just, um the first, the first three words listed, there was a lot of red line and then there wasn't more. So I just, I just wanted to get us on the record on that. Thank you so much.
No, you're welcome, you're welcome. It's been a fun process.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion, any further discussion? All right, Alderman from the tenth, you are, oh, wait a minute. It's been moved and seconded that we adopt amendment number two to Board Bill uh one oh one as amended. All in favor, signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Uh now what's before us is Board Bill one oh one as amended. Any discussion? Any further discussion on Board Bill one oh one as amended, as amended?
I see the Alderman from the twenty-fourth has his hand up.
Alderman from the, Alderman from the tenth, I can see it. Alderman from the twenty-fourth, you're you're recognized.
Uh thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I just wanted to uh to step back for a second and to thank uh. Uh the Alderman from the tenth and uh the Legislation Committee. I watched all of those meetings. Uh and uh it, this, this was a a beast to get across the finish line. And I think that everyone on the committee did a really good job uh of setting their own interests aside. Uh in in uh order to look out for the best interest of the city as a whole. Um it was a a tricky process from what it looked like uh outside looking in. Um but I just wanted to uh thank uh the committee and the Alderman from the tenth. Uh for the time and energy that they put in and the thoughtfulness and the willingness to. Listen to feedback from people, whether or not they were on the committee. Um it's a tricky process to do this, particularly a- a- at any time, it's a tricky process to do this. But particularly while we're in the middle of also going through reduction. Uh and uh the Alderman from the tenth handled it like a a real class act. And uh just wanted to uh acknowledge that and thank him for his uh effort. Uh and I will be supportive of this map. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Alderman. Um. Any further discussion, any further discussion? Alderman from the tenth, you're.
Mr. President.
Oh. Yeah, got, all the one from the eighth, can I have your things to color your?
Yeah.
I think I keep, I couldn't see it, but go ahead.
It's it's the skin tone accurate uh.
Oh.
Hand up there. So I appreciate, thank you, Mr. President. Um I, I am sorry to be uh back on the mic here again, but I, I do, you know, this. This is an incredibly difficult process, um and I continue to believe that. A process that for the most part takes us out of the consideration would be a better process for drawing the maps. Um I know that we were not able to get legislation through to get that changed before this vote, um but we have. You know, this is, this is a massive deal that we are doing here today. This is, it is. A huge determination of the future for our city. Um and you know, I continue to support and hopefully can support as we move forward. Um changing this process for more specific citizen input with our input also as representatives. Because we do, we do know our wards, we know the communities that we represent and the neighborhood associations and and how those folks are working together. Um I want, I want as we, as we continue to shape our government, um you know, for for our citizens to be. More involved. Um and I, I do also. You know, we, we all received letters um from the Citizens for Fair Maps and this is a coalition of a lot of organizations here in the city. Um that had a number of questions that were asked and I don't know that they ever received answers to those questions. Um and I, I would ask if the Alderman from the tenth would yield and we can maybe answer a few of those questions?
Uh Alderman from the tenth, uh will you yield to the all the one from the eighth?
Okay.
All right, uh. All the ones from age, please proceed.
Thank you. Um so, uh Mr. Chairman, the, the letter was the um, the one that we received on, I think it was November thirtieth. Um and there, there were a list of questions, some of which are um potentially beyond what we can get into today. Because it's asking about, you know, releasing certain data sets. Um and that, and I, so a couple of these though. Were helpful um in, if you could talk about. You know, how were, so this specific question said, how there were the growing Hispanic and AAPI populations considered in the map making? Or um residents with disabilities or or multiracial um citizens considered in the map making?
Well, as we, we followed the the guidelines uh going through this process. Uh of the, the three hundred one thousand five hundred seventy people uh in the city. Fifteen thousand four hundred five uh identified Hispanic, Hispanic or Latino, which is five point ten percent. Uh twelve thousand two hundred eighty-nine as Asian, which is four point zero percent. Now, as we're going through this and we try to adopt a ward or a voting block for them. Uh it looks like a uh a gentleman on heroin with an Etch A Sketch. Because the, 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 there, there is no compact unified area of an Hispanic or Asian population. Uh residing to to create an area. Uh and this was actually brought up and and uh by the s- city counselor. Noting that we, we attempted to do this. Uh we actually showed her a map where we tried and it it's impossible to make work. So in in according to that, we were following, again, the, the way you identify this, and this is done by the federal government. Is you identify. is you identify yourself a- as black or white or black or, uh, you're a black Hispanic, white Hispanic. Uh, these are the guidelines. The guidelines are done for the one person, one vote. They do not actually take in ethnicities a- at the federal level for census. So, uh, we, they're there and if, if there was a, a, a firm block where it could make a thing, but, uh, but the number wise, uh, again, even the decision by the city councillor came up stating that we, we've done our best and that they ca- you know, there's no compact or contiguous group where we could create a, a, a voting block of them or make sure that they're represented, uh, by a candidate of their choice or, or by their ethnicity.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then the next question, uh, were, I guess, and this kind of goes to that, that same one, but the next one was, um, were Hispanics who identify as white included in the Hispanic category or in the white?
Well, i- i- what, what gets, they, and that's one of the reasons I don't do it, is you can actually be counted twice. Uh, you, you're, as, as far as a census block, they're, they're, they're counted as, as the, the black or white Hispanic. Now, the ethnicity of Hispanic is, is counted, but it's not represented in the voting block. It's voted by how they, how they identify themselves. It's, it's not our, not our doing, not our choice, but those are the, the way the whole United States is operating under the census.
Sure, sure. Um, okay, the, the next question asks specifically about Ward C and D, um, and their compactness. Um, that war, it says in particular Ward D has a very uncompact shape. Other wards appear non-compact as well. Um, if, it says it can be justified if the shape fulfills other requirements, but we haven't gotten an ex, it says that we haven't gotten an explanation as to the non-compactness of D. Do you have any more information about those, those two wards in particular?
Well, Mr. Number, uh, Mr. Chairman, if, if you, if you will, because certainly, a lot of people haven't stood on this ground that we're on right now. Uh, we have, um, the, the letter from an org, you know, from a organization or group that is looking to ultimately try to sue the city so that they can take over this process and try to redo it in the future. Because that's what they want to do opposed to, uh, us handling the process at the board. Uh, the things, uh, a lot of the things that are in that letter are, you know, have been covered under this city councillor's, uh, you know, opinion. Uh, so I would recommend referring any of these questions directly from that letter back to the city councillor's opinion and through the city councillor. So that, um, uh, you know, we're not, you're not just, uh, you know, speaking, uh, you, you know, you know, to some of these, some of these things that, that, uh, the organization is working to try to find an angle, uh, just so that they can attempt to take over the process from, from the city of St. Louis.
Uh, Mr. President, if I could, this, um, this letter is from a number of organizations, including the ACLU of Missouri, the A. Philip Randolph Institute, Action St. Louis, the Coalition of Black Trade Unionists, Conversations for Political Change, Dance the Vote, Hispanic Leaders Group of Greater St. Louis, Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Metropolitan St. Louis, Indivisible St. Louis, In Every Generation, Jewish Community Relations Council, Council of St. Louis, League of Women Voters, the Metropolitan Congregations United, Missouri Asian American Youth Foundation, Missouri Council of the Blind, Missouri Faith Voices, Missouri Protection and Advocacy Services, Missouri Voter Protection Coalition, the Mound City Bar Association, the NAACP of St. Louis County, the National Council of Jewish Women, St. Louis, the National Federation of the Blind of Missouri, Promo, St. Louis Area Voting Initiative, St. Louis Area Voter Protection Coalition, Show Me Integrity, Vettendo for Africa, and Women's Voices Raised for Social Justice. I do not think one, one of those parties is involved, um, specifically with the other petition, and I am, I am not, I am not on an effort today to try to send folks towards a new petition, um, or a, a vote, um, on a referendum. I, my name is not on that, that petition. I am asking these questions because these folks are deeply invested in our community and they ask these questions and they ask for them to be answered publicly. And so I, since we were not able to have another meeting where we could answer those questions, I think it's valid to get some of those questions answered on the record today. Um, and that is why if, if, if we don't have answers for those, or if you want to just refer us back to the legal opinion, then that's fine, but I, I think it's worth highlighting these questions.
Okay, uh, so first I'd say some of the people on that list have taken their names off of the list, like the NAACP of St. Louis County. They said they never read the letter, did not, uh, have, you know, access to it and did not know about the letter, but their name was put on it. So you have those types of things. The city councillor answered the main, you know, her, her opinion answers a lot of what is, is in that letter. Uh, and again, my advice, um, is to refer any of those things, any of those types of matters. And a lot of those organizations that you listed are on, uh, the Prop R amendment. And the Prop R people are working to, uh, try to, uh, take over this process by finding some angle to get the city wrapped up in a, in a lawsuit. So, uh, the way to properly handle that at this point is to send those questions to the city councillor and let, and allow the city councillor to respond to them, uh, because of the, where we are in this process. So that would be my recommendation to the chairman. Uh, and again, only because of where we are in this process and understanding the nature of that letter.
I, thank you, Mr. President. My, my intention here is not to be divisive or to be, um, putting these together, but then there are some, there are some important questions here, and I also would like to ask, um, if you are still on the dais right now, if, if conversation, if debate on a bill is properly in order, if you're on the dais at the moment?
No, and I'm not, I'm not debating the bill. I'm just offering, because, I said, because of where we are and what this process, uh, you know, you know, where everything stands with the city council's opinion and that you have an organization, uh, that is angling to try to find a way, uh, to enter into a lawsuit, my recommendations, uh, is to take those questions and give them to the city council. That's, that's the only recommendation I was making. I spoke, I spoke further only because, uh, there was, you know, another point of clarification when you read the letter, but, but, but you're correct. I'm not, uh, didn't mean to enter into debate, but I wanted to advise this board because it, because it would be uh, inappropriate for me to sit here understanding the legal ramifications of this discussion without pointing them out. So, but please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I, I do understand that any of, any of the work that we take in front of us could be subject to litigation. Um, and I do, um, thank the city councillor's office and I think, um, the, the sponsors of this bill for submitting board bill 101, um, for legal opinion. I think it is incredibly helpful. Um, there is still, um, Mr. Chairman, if you would, there was conversation, um, and I do think, is it, one of the points you hear talks about.
I'm not in the discussion. This is back between you and the.
I did, so I said, Mr. Chairman. I'm sorry. I was, I was, I was referring to the alderman from the 10th. Thank you.
Alright, go ahead. Sorry about that.
Thank you. Um, so the, the considerations, um, around breaking down the segregation and the barriers like the Delmar divide, it does look like in our, in our map iterations that we moved wards toward trying to bridge the Delmar divide instead of use Delmar as a boundary. Would you, would you agree that, that we got a little bit better towards that, that goal?
Well, I, I think we, we did a good job of doing that. You take the breakdown of the population of the 301,578, and I believe it was only around 81,000 of those people reside north of Delmar. So what you have is just a little more than one quarter of the population living, uh, north of Delmar. So yes, we, we've stretched, we, we've accommodated and that's, that also uh, explains why some of the wards up there, you know, besides the, the, the river, you know, the city filing the rivers, uh, banks and how we are shaped, why we come up with some odd shaped wards. And the other part that constituted a lot of these shapes was that the main goal of this was what I heard from everyone when they found out I was chairman, was neighborhoods, neighborhoods, neighborhoods. Keep neighborhoods intact. We're tired of going to a meeting with three aldermen representing our neighborhood. We went, you know, what we did of the 79 neighborhoods in the city of St. Louis, only 12 are split, and those are always split into two wards. So 85% of the neighborhoods are intact. And keeping neighborhoods intact, there are no rectangular neighborhoods for the most part. The lines are all over the place. As someone stated, maybe we should have, uh, looked into redoing neighborhoods a couple of years back to, to make our wards look a little more uh, rectangular or, you know, how it goes. But what we found is in keeping neighborhoods together, you can come up with very strange lines. And then, uh, you know, there, there are city parks that we've kept whole into neighborhoods as opposed to dividing parks, uh, in the past. So it, you might have something that looks strange until you pop on the real map and see where their neighborhoods are, see where the parks are. Uh, and then, you know, the population comes into it where, uh, we have seven minority, majority wards and seven majority. We have broken the, the population down to meet the, the numbers, uh, with two, uh, white majority wards actually, uh, in South St. Louis, uh, three of them cross over the Delmar divide. So we feel that, uh, and I believe the, the legal opinion from the, the councillor's office mirrors that, that we, we did our best to do everything to meet the federal requirements as a requirement that the federal government does not look into, which is the neighborhoods. We're trying to keep, St. Louis is a city of neighborhoods. That's our history. That's our, our mantra that we heard through this whole thing. So that was our, our goal to try and keep it whole. And keeping it whole, if you go back to our first version of the map, we knew the first version we drew was not going to pass muster, but that showed trying to keep every neighborhood whole didn't work. You know, we had to bust some neighborhoods up. And as, you know, we followed the population, uh, it changed things, but we came up through input with not only uh, the, the people writing into us, uh, doing this, attending our meetings, uh, with, with all the input we put into, they helped change and drive the map. So what you see is, is not just a chairman and his committee, it's a chairman and his committee with the city of St. Louis who will, are willing to, to get input and partake in this process as well as, uh, you know, the rest of this board. You know, I was open to hearing from everyone that I could, uh, the whole, the whole board committee was. So, uh, what we have here is a board that, uh, a board bill that represents tons of input from everyone. Over a, our first meeting was held September 28th, so it got out, uh, the, the, 18 meetings. We're seeing more than 450 public comments and writing by mail, by phone. Uh, we had public notices in every paper, radio station, trying to reach out as much as we can. The portal uh, has been open, which has been a great source of, of, of help in, in this whole process. So that's, that's where we're at. I hope they answered most of your question.
Did, uh, and roundabout a little bit on the, the specifically on crossing Delmar. Um, but the, um, I, and I, I did, the, the last question that they talk about, um, is potentially, um, potentially working towards, uh, some two or four wards in the center of the city that more accurately reflect the roughly even numbers of black and white St. Louisans. Um, based on, you know, because voter patterns have also enforced that, um, that candidate, that candidates of, of various races can be elected in various places. And so I know these are, these are delicate, um, analysis that can be done. Um, but, so that is, that is something that they were talking about was, you know, is there, is there a way to pull populations together instead of continually segregating? And I realize saying that as a white person, um, this is, this is complicated. This is understanding where voters of color have historically, um, voted for candidates of color. White voters have historically voted for white candidates. Um, I don't know that we're, I think the last several elections have shown that that trend is changing, particularly in some of these centrally located neighborhoods. Um, so that, that was a question of, of is there, are we on the path towards being able to integrate some of these, some of these wards in a way that, that more makes up kind of what the, what the whole of the city looks like. Um, and that's maybe a, that's, that's maybe a giant legal, um, consideration to get into, but, um,
Yeah, I'd be, I'll be. Well, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, this, this.
I, I'm happy to take this.
No, but Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, even if you are happy to take it, some of these uh, things, because again, we're still dealing with a letter from an organization that, uh, you know, uh, has organized under Prop R, um, a group of, of nonprofits to support, uh, an effort to, um, up in this process. Uh, I would, I would refer as many of these things as possible back to the legal opinion. And let the attorney, uh, at this point handle any of those, uh, those questions. I think that's where we're at with it. So again, you're, 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 you guys.
No, I, I, I thank you, sir. No, I, I am not a lawyer. I've never played one on TV. I don't attempt to. Uh, you know, the questions you're asking are very broad and general. How can I tell how someone's going to vote? You know, uh, i- i- it's the, the whole thing of, uh, in a, in a perfect world, we wouldn't have to have redistricting. In a perfect world, you know, people wouldn't see color. People wouldn't see this. People wouldn't see that. What you're asking is how am I interpreting how people are going to see the world? You know, I grew up as a child in the sixties and seventies and you know, by this, this time, we thought everything would be perfect. You know, we thought we, you know, all the answers were given. But the councillor has, has looked into that. Yes, people vote, people are voting their hearts. As we, uh, one of the first things we did with this, with this committee was we talked about, you know, doing a, a north side, uh, branch and south side branch and looking into it. What we found uh, on the committee is that wasn't necessary. When I came down to this board in 2003, it was, it was definitely a, a, a north side, south side thing. Uh, I find I have more in common now with most of my north side brethren than I do with, with, with many of the, some, some aldermen on the south side. Uh, you know, I, I can sit and talk to them and the, the problems that we used to have 18 years ago down here, I don't run into when I talk to, uh, you know, you know, Alderman from the 22nd, Alderman from the 19th, Alderman from the 19th. You know, we, it's open discussion. We, we realize, you know, what, what the world is and what, you know, the, the city is the most important thing. To me, this map was the most important thing. As I stated earlier, we're not drawing a map for any of us who are currently in office. This map is whoever decides to run in 2023. Uh, and, and i- it's going to be the, the question you're asking, I don't know that I can answer. You know, uh, there's a legal opinion on that. I'm not a lawyer.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Chairman, on any of these further things that are coming directly from that letter, I'm gonna.
That was the last question from the letter, Mr. President.
Uh, send those things directly to the city councillor. We, we, they, that, those things and the nature of them, uh, and the nuances of them in terms of entrapment aren't things that we, uh, should, uh, we should, things, those are things at this point we need to be turning over to city council. So please proceed, all the one from the.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, there are no further questions from that letter, but I want, I, I am bothered by the fact that, that I'm, I shouldn't be asking these, I, there, there's nothing in the letter that was sent to the board of aldermen that indicates a lawsuit is coming from those groups who are mentioned. And we have just read a letter, um, on the previous board bill 124 from a group who is actively threatening to sue. Right? So we, we are, I don't think that we should ever be rejecting questions from groups of people that have asked them of our board. I think in, we should be having conversations about this. I am, I am not building a legal case here. If I was building a legal case, I would have much more specific questions. And I, I would have done differently as I approached this. This is, this is conversation. These are, um, some of the questions that were asked. Um, and as we did not have a town hall meeting, I wanted to, to ask those questions, um, on behalf of some of those organizations um, that I have worked closely with and that my constituents are, are a part of. Um, and my, um, one more question, um, Alderman, uh, Alderman from the 10th, I'm sorry. The, um, Ward I, um, is, is, uh, dips down a piece into Dutch Town. It is also 5%. It's one of the higher percentages over the, um, uh, population deviation. And I'm wondering, you know, because Dutch Town is such a, is such a di- diverse community, um, and Ward I was specifically notated as one of the white majority wards, what is the purpose then of dipping that far down into Dutch Town when Dutch Town is under the standard deviation and Ward I is over? Is there, so if we're, if we're trying to keep that neighborhood continuity, that was one of the boundaries that still stuck out to me as, um, question.
Why? Okay, I'm happy to answer that. That just in the H, uh, from I is, is the Compton Heights neighborhood.
No, no, I'm sorry. Um, and down into Dutch Town, into Ward L.
Okay, you're, okay, you're talking down at the bottom.
Yes, down at the southern end.
Okay, at the, at the bottom. What, when it goes down to the L, what we're running into to keep, uh, cause L is one of the, uh, minority, majority wards in South St. Louis. And if you take I, I, I believe it. I I believe it it changed that if I'm I'm incorrect in my my memory of this. But we were trying to keep numbers right and and also the the. Major minority uh, majority population correcting L. If I misspeak on that.
Okay, so so that piece of I that dips down into L. Has more white population that would throw off that population?
Because we're trying to keep above the fifty percentile and that, I believe, but. When we took that out, it it drove it down into forty seven or forty eight off the top of my head. Uh, and we're, you know, trying to keep the numbers correct. Uh, when you get down, that's why L is so, there's a ton of people that live in L, as you can tell by the size of it.
Right.
But uh, what we ran into. Was the minority, majority uh, situation in that in that that area.
Okay, um. Okay, I um. Thank you, uh, alderman from the tenth uh, for asking uh. For answering my questions. Um, my. I I do want to highlight for the public again, like how difficult this process is. Um, this is. This is the future of our city and looking at these things um, and trying to be objective and trying to keep the politics out of it, but understand. That these boundaries will have a a significant effect on the future of our city. Um, this is difficult and that's, that's one of the reasons that that I co-sponsored with Alderman and Gracia legislation to to change up this process. Um, and and I would still encourage that um, as a board bill coming, coming through the Board of Aldermen in the future. Um, I. But I, you know, I I I do want to um, applaud uh, the alderman from the tenth. And the legislation committee um, and the president's office. Uh, this, this process honestly has gone far better. Um, than my worst expectations and maybe a little bit worse than my best expectations, which I think is is a good place to be. Um, I, you know, I, I would continue to to ask that we. That we reform this process as we move into the next ten years and maybe none of us will be here in the next ten years and. Um, but as maybe we can set some things into place to solidify some of these processes. Um, so that, so that we have a robust um, community outreach that we start earlier in the process, that we understand. Um, that this massive change, um, particularly as as we are reducing the the board. Um, the effects that that has on our city. Um, and, you know, and this amount of public input in. In something that is so transformational for the city is really important that we gain. Um, the trust of the of the citizens that we're going to represent. Um, changing government, changing representation is difficult. Um. It is. It it's just really. Really important that we that we try to get, um, this is perfect as possible. I know that this is never going to be perfect redistricting. It's always complicated. Um, I do appreciate all of our citizens who participated in meetings and who uh. Sent in letters and sent in comments and took the time to engage. Folks who drew their own maps, who took the data and drew their own maps. Um, thank you for doing that as well, because I think that helped us see. Um, where some of the possibilities lie. Um, you know, and maybe next time around, we can get some more licenses of the of the software so that we can, um, we can all be. Understanding under, like, I I would love to understand exactly what that population um, down into L. Is and and what that changes with that ward and it's hard, you can't do that with the the maps that we publish. We can only do that when we're, when we're using the software. Um, but I, you know, just wanting to tell. Everyone who is watching that that this is really difficult and that's also why I I support. Going forward to the next time that we do this, that that there be a citizen-driven process, um, a demographer potentially involved, hopefully involved. Um, and I'd thank everyone for their intense work on this.
All right, thank you all. Brother Stevens, thank you all the woman, all the women from uh, from the eighth for uh, all of your. Comments and everything. Uh, Alderman from the. From the twelfth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a quick uh, quick point of clarification question. Um, are we to now be expecting? An additional letter from the city councillor or clarifying letter from the city councillor? With regards to the items that the alderman from the eighth brought up, or I I got kind of confused by that.
No, so uh, if you would like that the letter that that those organizations sent to the Board of Aldermen, if you would like further clarification on that letter. You can send it to the city council. The city councillor answered the substantive stuff within that letter. If you look within her opinion. Uh, the answers can be pulled out of there for the majority of it, but uh, further to dive deeper in it and um, you could send it. Send it to the city council and she'll be glad to walk through it because she has all of the data. She is. Everything. She is the most. Competent person at this point to to uh, answer any of those things. I recommend anything we get further like that. Between now and this thing going into effect, we need to send it over there and just let her handle it. She is an extraordinary attorney, lucky to have such a good city council.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Mr. President. Um, I I would like to solicit her. Uh, sort of her thoughts and whatnot. So for today's vote, I will be a present.
Okay.
So I want to explain that, but.
All right. Oh, you're, you're welcome. You're, you're welcome, Alderman. You're welcome. All right, it's been moved by the alderman from the tenth, second by the alderman from the fourteenth, that we perfect board bill number one oh one as amended. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. President.
Abstain.
Um, we have a president from Brother Stevens and abstain from Jesse Todd. Jesse, I'm gonna get you after this meeting.
Abstain.
You're no longer my brother anymore after this.
Oh, come on, where is the Southern hospitality, brother?
No, I can't do that, Dave. I can't.
Don't do me like that.
It's been moved and it, uh. Body vote is staying the motion from the alderman from the tenth and perfected board bill one oh one as amended. Congratulations, everybody. Woo. Congratulations, you all, you all, uh, you know, I've been telling people as I've gone around the city, you all have. This board has been extraordinary through this process and I'll talk more about that this uh, at Friday's meeting when we third reading and final passes, but I'm telling you. Um, I wish all of you were in on the conversations with your colleagues. You would be just surprised at how. Given and open and selfless those com, those discussions have been. My God, this, we have an extraordinary Board of Aldermen, which is why we can get through this. And other places across the state, their maps are going to court. And you guys just voted. You know, you know, uh, almost unanimously. Um. Uh, to adopt a map that in all likelihood is going to end up with half of you, half of you losing your position. So that is extraordinary. Let me just give you all a round of applause. Thank you. Right now. Back to your hands, Madam Clerk.
That is extent of board bills for perfection.
All right, third reading consent.
We have none.
Third reading of report of engrossments.
We have none.
Dispense for all items nineteen through. Twenty. One, Miss Lanez. Any further, Miss Lanez, unfinished business?
We have none.
Announcements.
Thursday, December ninth, twenty twenty one, Public Safety will have a meeting at nine AM via webinar. Health and Human Services will have a meeting at two PM via webinar. And Friday, December tenth, twenty twenty one, full board meeting, ten AM via webinar. That is extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements, any further announcements? Alderman from the tenth, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Um. As far as I can tell. And all aldermen here are present today, sir. No excuses. No, there's no excuses today.
Oh, excellent. Uh, Alderman from tenth, you recognize on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn to this Friday, December tenth at ten oh one AM.
Second.
Saying about all of them from the fourteenth and somebody else. Uh. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Aye.
We stand adjourned. You all have a great couple days. See you Friday. Thank you so much.
Thank you.